Ready? Dave, you ready? All right. Notice is hereby given that the Lago Vista City Council is holding a regular meeting on Thursday, December 6th, 2018, beginning at 6:32 PM in the city council chambers at City Hall, 5803 Thunderbird, Lago Vista, Texas, as prescribed by VTCA Government Code Section 551.041 to consider the following agenda items. Items do not have to be taken in the same order as shown in the meeting notice. Senator, please note, we have all of our council members with us tonight. I would like for y'all to welcome Tim Collins. He got sworn in earlier today, so he is official and is joining us for his first full council meeting tonight. Josh will be joining us later. He had an activity with his daughter tonight, so he's excused. We have Sandra, Danny, our chief, Dottie Legal, Dave IT, who we got Meredith Starr, Roy, Chris, Eric. Who else? Am I missing anybody? All right. If you would, please join me in the pledge allegiance to the U.S. and the Texas flag. Start with the United States flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Give us the copy down. Oh, there it is.
You can just move your lips.
Okay.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one nation under God, indivisible.
Thank you. All right, citizen comments. In accordance with the Open Meetings Act, council is prohibited from acting or discussing other than factual responses to specific questions, any items not on the agenda. All right. Got my sign up sheets, and I am going to start with Ron Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. My name is Ron Smith, 20609 Oak Ridge. First of all, I'd like to say the council needs to cease and desist from all further actions associated with the City Hall move. Recent Facebook poll shows that 89% in the sample size want roads and infrastructure dealt with, and 11% want City Hall move. The sample size is statistically significant. It's got a sample size that's large enough to give you 95% confidence, with the plus or minus marks to verify 5%. So the survey really needed to pay attention to at least the first one. And Mayor, I have an offer for you that you just cannot refuse. This ideal will not cost our taxpayers any more taxes, but instead redirect existing expenditures by withdrawing from Cap Metro. So currently, we're stuck with about $450,000 annual Cap Metro bill until some elected official from Lago Vista decides to push this matter again. Mayor, you are the senior council member, and you have more years of council service than the rest of the council combined. So if you don't work on it, no one will. The council needs to work this issue through their newly-elected council representative, I mean, state representative Vicki Goodwin, as she defeated Representative Paul Workman. Workman championed our Cap Metro withdrawal by trying to get the state law changed to allow more frequent elections and by reducing some debt and a few other matters. If you don't get this matter done in the next two, this particular session of Congress, we're going to wait another two years to have another shot at it. Former Dale Mitchell worked this issue back in 2017, only to have a Tea Party in the Senate kill it on Mother's Day of 2017. Cap Metro has done nothing, absolutely nothing, for Lago Vista since the voters proved to stay on it back in 2015. They haven't even fixed their signs. The Daily Texan reported Cap Metro needs to grow south toward Manchaca and Buta, east toward Maynor and Elkin, and southeast toward the airport. I did not see Lago Vista in these plans. The Stateman reports Cap Metro needs to think big, like $6 billion, with a B, to $8 billion, and those are just preliminary costs. Mayor, we don't need to make Cap Metro rich by building businesses up at the empty shopping center. What we need to do is keep both halves for ourselves and get off of Cap Metro. That would represent about $900,000 in actual savings to our citizens. So in conclusion, stop the City Hall move, spend your energy withdrawing from Cap Metro, saving $450,000 a year until we get off, but most importantly, avoiding future debt as Cap Metro thinks to expand.
Thank you. Okay, next up, Brian Carlson.
Sorry, my husband's stuck in traffic on 360 right now.
If you would, please state your name and address for record, please.
Absolutely. Jennifer Carlson, 206 White Line Road. I'm representing my husband, Brian Carlson. We have the Lago Vista Flying Club. I am the vice president of the Flying Club. I just wanted to thank the city of Lago Vista for all the support we've had and just let you guys know that it keeps building and growing, and the kids are excited about our programs, and thank you so much for your support.
Thank you. All right, next I have Jane Brunslig.
My name is Jane Brunslig. I live at 21815 Tallahassee. Mr. Mayor, council members, staff, I want to start out by just saying...
Should we?
I want to start out by saying that I've been accused of being anti-council. I've been accused of having a vengeance against the council or members of the council. I don't think you could find a greater supporter of this city the last four years than what I think. I've supported the cities, city and administration of almost everything that they've done. I've supported the businesses. So calling me after anti-council, I want to take it out right away. I am against one issue that's moving the city off to Lago Vista Village. And there are a couple reasons I'm against it. I feel that it's built on one man's dream and a house of cards. It's been stated by the mayor that moving there would help bring traffic along the 1431 corridor, which would in turn bring commercial businesses. I did some math, and I had to guess at some figures. And I'm figuring you've got 50 full-time people maybe working at City Hall right now. And I'm going to use the mayor's number of, you know, social media represents 10%. So on a survey, 29 people said that they used City Hall once or more per month. So if you take that 10%, that's 290 people that use City Hall once or more in a month. There are basically approximately 16 working days that the city council works in one month. So that comes out to about 18 people a day. That plus 50 employees is 68 people, four days a week, bringing more traffic to the 1431 corridor. I think the idea came from, I've been to a lot of city council and chamber meetings, and when, was it Buxton, what was her name? We did the survey, they did a survey a couple years ago to see what kind of traffic is on 1431. At that time, it was 12,000 to 13,000 people a day. Most businesses that we contacted to drive coming here, among other reasons, want a minimum of 20,000 to 25,000 people per day on that road. So adding 68, 70 people is not going to bring traffic to that area. The second flaw that I feel is in my plan is the dream about Don Drive. I think it sounds really nice, but we are not going really. Don Drive does not have a major street running through it. There's no plan to rehab City Hall. It's only planned to rent to organizations. That means, you know, we talk a lot about rec centers and art centers. That's not in the plan. There's not going to be a rec center or art center there, at least not in the foreseeable future. So basically, you're going to have an empty building sitting here most of the time until we have some money, and we have enough empty buildings. Any other thing that comes down to funding and why we're doing it at this time?
Jane, your three minutes are up.
Funding.
Thank you. Next, I have Dale Mitchell.
Thank you, Mayor. I promised I'd be back.
You're not going to attend every meeting? So aren't you going to attend every?
It's settled. I hope you agree with the first two statements I make. There's not a competent builder or developer that today would build the Village Shopping Center, because there's just not the demand for that kind of space in Lago Vista at this time. Second statement, obviously, that demand wasn't there in 2007 when it was built, because we haven't had any usage of the place, and we still have empty space in other shopping centers around. It's kind of a perception that the owner and the associated brokers of the Village Shopping Center have not been seen as accommodating to legitimate purchase offers that have been made from several parties in the recent years. And there have been some legitimate offers made to them, and he refused them. Regarding the current physical condition of the Village Shopping Center, the three to four parties that were involved in a possible purchase of the facility were all informed that the roof leaked and repairs an amount of $300,000 were required. One party observed the leaks after each of multiple rain events. That's in contrast to what you've heard two meetings ago. It is a perception of the city House of Leaves that retail and commercial development at the Village Shopping Center would be stimulated by the presence of government offices at the facility. That might be, but when would that occur? How does that occur? The 380 agreements are primarily written to encourage retail commercial endeavors. The one written for the Village Center should help, but unfortunately, the company that we thought was involved with the lease, who is involved with the production and distribution of vitamins for pets, has now backed out of the lease at the Village Center. The city pursued retail recruitment for two years with assistance of a consulting firm in 2015 through 2017. Elaine Hughes, Keith Billington, Melissa Foster, Debra Hill, and me were involved, and we made substantial contacts. Elaine still has a listing of all those. There were visits to Lago Vista by the primary real estate procurement principals for HEB and Randalls, and the conclusion reached was that Lago Vista, the North Shore, will not be, will not be developed with, until enough rooftops and associated traffic on 1431 and Almond Court is developed, and then that's when retail development will result in relation to the growth that we see. Most recently, it has been expressed in moving the City Hall activities with Village Center, then the use of the vacated building here would help. If it was reused, it would stimulate the small business development along Don Drive and here. Again, when would that occur? What is the actual plan for utilizing current City Hall? I do want to point out in conclusion, I believe the $500,000 associated with the buildout, plus triple net costs estimated for future years, and lease costs for years 16 through 15 are monies that could be better applied to other cities' needs, such as infrastructure and streets. Just consider that the City Hall staff today works four days a week, and out of those days, the 10 or 11 holidays that they have come out of those days, money through Thursday, that means they would be occupying least space 54.5% of the days in the year. Now, that's probably not sufficient amount of need to actually go pay enough money. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, I have Rich Piaszeki. Did I say that right?
Yes. My name's Rich Piaszeki, 20617 Highland Lake Loop. First of all, I want to thank all of you members for your service, your time, and your efforts in our community here, and speak tonight about concern about the City Hall moving to Lago Vista Village. Lago Vista POA almost rented property at Lago Vista Village about a year ago, but was smart enough to first hold a meeting, which was well-public. Meeting was packed at R.K. clubhouse. The board almost got their heads tapped off by a vociferous crowd, mostly against the action. Many well-informed people spoke about what it would really cost to build it out, and told by others, "We just don't need it," or what. The city keeps buying things while neglecting some of the infrastructure of the city. We purchased a $3.7 million house. We purchased a $2.6 million golf course. We purchased another golf course for about $600,000. Both those courses have an operating cost of about $555,000 a year, according to the last budget report that I pulled up online. That's about $6 million in debt that we still have, and I believe that was paid for by a bond election, or a bond years ago, but I'm not positive about that. We still have this debt, and we're still responsible for it. And now we want to spend much more money for new office spaces while neglecting our infrastructure. Do you have a buyer for this space? Would you buy a new house without first selling your existing one? Or do we have excess money in our budget? I don't think so, because the last I saw on the last budget, we're about $1.4 million short with a shortfall. Renting Lago Vista Village and running up more city debt does not seem physically responsible to me. If we need more space, I believe it would be more responsible to add on to this location on 3194. Yes, it would be nice to have new office space, and everybody wants new offices, new equipment, new building. But past city councils, unfortunately, have run up a bill which you're still paying for today. We, we used to be able to take care of our streets, and now we don't seem to be doing that in the past number of years. For example, Island Lake Drive, it's been chip sealed last year, which is a cheap, bare bade fix. Not only was it a bad fix, but they applied at the wrong time of year in the cold weather rather than the warm weather. They patched holes by steamrolling dirt and then just applying tar on top of it. They dug a pipeline about four months ago, and they still haven't repaired the holes in the street. And the parts of it they did do, they did unprofessionally. I hear talk about a bond package, and I'm not sure about that, to fix our streets, which I don't think we would need if we wouldn't have had this past $6.9 million in debt. When the 2017 budget, which was the last one I saw published, it said we had $1.4 million deficit. In closing, I think a good leader will leave things better for whatever they did during their charge and their tenure. Will renting a new office space make the city better? Or will it just make the offices better? Will the people of Lago Vista gain from these new office spaces? Again, I don't think so. This is my money, and I do not approve. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Kevin Sullivan.
Kevin Sullivan, 3933 Outpost Trace. Mayor and council, I want to share some thoughts about the possible move of Lago Vista Village and writing points. First, lack of options. When this item was brought before council, we were presented with only two options. One was to move to Lago Vista Village at a cost I thought was, seemed low. The second was to build a new one, 13,000 square foot facility at an artificially high rate. Those are the only two that were presented to us. The problem is, in the next five years, the city won't need any more than about $1,000 to $2,000 in additional square feet. Yet, the council was not presented with an option to build new space as needed on land that we own, nor was the council presented with an option to lease just a small amount of space that we need while we plan to build something new that could take care of us in the long run. Another point, leasing cost is more expensive. I've heard every proponent of moving say that this is an interim solution, it won't be a long term, that we're going to have to buy or build something in the future. Well, if that's the case, you've got to add up the cost of leasing the building now, plus what we'll spend 10 years from now to build, which would be much more expensive than if we were to build it today. Master Plan Alignment. The reason given for the move to Lago Vista Village is resolving the moonscape eyesore problem, and it is a problem. The mayor has referred to the master plan survey respondents, saying that citizens want the city to do something about it. The problem is, the survey respondents weren't asked if they're willing to spend $1.75 million worth of taxpayer dollars to solve the problem. What would their answer be? We'll never know, because they haven't been asked, okay? A recent Facebook poll can be a proxy for that, and they overwhelmingly said they do not want taxpayer dollars spent on a move to Lago Vista Village and solving the moonscape problem. Economic Development. Proponents of the move keep stating that the move to City Hall will drive oodles of economic activity and the money that comes with it. How will moving City Hall that's open four days a week really drive activity, retail activity over there? In addition, no one ever presented to us on council what the financial windfall would be. We've got platitudes, general stuff, but no specifics about what kind of money we might generate. Let's take another proxy example. The Super S Lowe's development came in and produced $228,000 worth of sales tax over a 10-year period. If the move to Lago Vista Village were to cause activity similar to this, which is a huge if, it would take 20 years for us to get that money back, 20 years. When the city does projects like this, the whole idea is for us to add to the coffers, not give money out ahead of time and hope that we get it back 20 years later. Done Deal. The mayor was asked at his town hall meeting the other night, is it a done deal? I don't know the exact response, but it was enough of a yes that a bunch of people left because they didn't want to waste their time. My question is, is how can anyone know if this is a done deal? My understanding from talking to the city manager is the council still must vote on the finalized lease agreement, got to vote on the contract for the buildout, and has to vote on allocation of the triple net funds. None of that's happening. If all those votes are still in the future, absent an illegal walking form, how can anybody know that this is a done deal? Okay? In closing, I'm not saying don't do anything. What I am saying is slow the roll, okay? Live up to your fiduciary duties and do the appropriate financial analysis. And as you move through the process, discuss options in an open forum and allow the citizens to have input on it. I promise, if you do that, you're going to end up with a much better result. Thanks for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you. All right. Next up, Carl Deekman.
Check, check. Carl Deekman, 18813 Venture Drive, down in Point Venture. So, good evening, folks. I'm Carl Deekman. I'm president of the Turnback Canyon Trail Conservancy. That's what I'm here, just to give you guys a quick update tonight. And I haven't been in front of this council for a little while. I know we have some new council members, so I figured this was a good chance just to get out here and show my face. For audience members and folks that don't know what the Turnback Canyon Trail Conservancy is, so we're about a year and a half old nonprofit located here on the north side of Lake Travis in the Lago Vista area. Our goal is to bring a 20-mile interconnecting trail network on the west side of Lago Vista. As many folks know, there's a 315-acre chunk of land that the city owns over there that connects to Lakeside or to Sarah, as many of us know it, and then that also connects to the Balcones National Wildlife Refuge. And we have potential to get an interconnecting trail network with all these, through these locations, really creating an awesome drawing feature and giving citizens and the community access to some really beautiful terrain down there in Turnback Canyon. So that's what Turnback Canyon is. To give you guys a short update here, we are marching forward. We are targeting, this is a soft target, groundbreaking in the spring of 2019. We'd like our initial trail to connect Lago Vista to Lakeside or to Sarah through Turnback Canyon. We'd like to talk offline sometime about some of the roads we'd like to access it from, but we're targeting and trying to fine tune some plans of where would enter on the Lago Vista side. We've got a quote from the Texas Conservation Corp., which is a youth works volunteer organization for about $12,000 to get that initial one and a half miles of trails done. And we think it would be a really great opportunity for us to finally get some trails on the dirt and have something to show for our efforts. In terms of long-term plan, or along the lines of long-term plans, this spring we're applying, or this early, late winter, we're actually applying for a Texas Park and Wildlife Grant for regional trails. This is a big money grant. This will give us a lot of money if we win this and give us much more opportunity to expand our trails, as well as create needed infrastructure for trailheads and other facilities, signage, and so forth. So the bottom line and the conclusion, I just want folks, you know, I've been here before. We are working hard behind the scenes. We're trying to get this project done, and we hope we can do some really exciting things for the community. Thanks.
All right. Thank you. All right, that is all of the people that I have signed up. Give a few more minutes if there's anybody that did not sign up but would like to speak. Please come ahead. State your name and address for the record, please.
Hello, my name is Stephanie Smith, 20606 Breeding Iron, Lago Vista. I was at one of the meetings, and it was shortly before Ron Smith has sent stuff down. He had made a motion or a suggestion to lower our tax rate, and all the council members all said, "No, not at this time. We need the money for the infrastructure." So do the infrastructure. Stop trying to move City Hall. There's so much energy being spent into this. It's not needed. It's not needed at this time. Have you had any of the bits come through on expanding this current building? I don't think any of that's been done. It's already in the plan. So we need to focus on that. I made a comment on social media and said, "It's not the government's responsibility or the role to stimulate traffic to draw businesses using citizens' limited tax monies. That's free markets' responsibility. We need to own our building outright so it frees up our daily cash flow. This is a complete misuse of citizen tax dollars. We all knew moving out here would have certain amenities, to have certain amenities would require a trip to Cedar Park, Austin, et cetera. Stay put and expand the current City Hall as already planned." So that's just my two cents. I think we need to stop talking about it. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else? All right, we will move into items of community interest. Pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551.0415, the city council may report on any of the following items: expressions of thanks, gratitude, and condolences; information regarding holiday schedules; recognition of individuals, i.e. proclamations. I have one here that I'm going to read later, Flood Street Team Date; reminders regarding city council events; reminders regarding community events; and health and safety announcements. I was asked to provide this to you all today. Can't show you all, and it was not in the packet because this just came to me, but on our Facebook page, at the very top where we have little buttons, we now have a green button with a volume sign on it. That is the link to Lago Vista Radio. You can currently stream Lago Vista Radio on your computer.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, that's actually on the website, on the top right-hand side of our website.
Right. What did I say?
Facebook.
Oh, I'm sorry. Heard so much social media tonight.
There's a lot of social media.
All right. Anyway, next to our Facebook link, we have the link to Lago Vista Radio. We also have a new button for our city Instagram page so that people can tag us on their Instagram photos. Tag @cityoflagovistatexas, all one word. @cityoflagovistatexas for those of y'all who are on Instagram. And down at the bottom where we have our big buttons, we also have a button link to stream Lago Vista Radio. Let's see, what else do I have here? Is there anything I left off?
Mayor and council, citizens, the other thing that I'm looking into is, because a lot of our citizens are not signed up on Facebook, but we do post quite a bit of quick posts, things that they need to know. For instance, there's workers out on Lumen, "Slow your speed down," things that don't warrant an official news article on the website. So what I'm going to do is I'm getting in touch with our salesperson from ReVise, who's our website company provider, and asking them if they could include an app that would give us a live feed of all our Facebook posts right on the front page of the website. So people would be able to go to the website, see all the Facebook posts without being a Facebook user.
Awesome.
That's it.
Thank you. All right, news, we have the Christmas Staff, Christmas City, Chris, excuse me, City Staff Christmas Party Thursday, December 13th. There's an antique jewelry framed art class tomorrow from noon to 2:00 p.m. at the library. Saturday, December 8th, from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at the high school is Give Back to the World Holiday Bazaar. Santa Claus at Caddyshack, that's out in Point Venture. Kids' Christmas Pageant, Sunday, December 16th, at Grace Church on Boggy Ford Road. And Christmas Cantada, Sunday, December 16th, 4:00 p.m. at Lakeside Christian Fellowship. And I believe that is everything between now and next city council meeting that I have. Anybody else have anything?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Mayor, I just might remind you that the Addams Family production is going on at the high school Thursday, Friday, and Saturday nights at 7:00 p.m. and Sunday afternoon at 2:00 p.m. That's their production.
All right, thank you. All right, so at this time, and I hope some of these people are actually in attendance tonight, but I have a proclamation that I would like to present tonight. At the onset of the flooding, when people started posting for help on social media, a few of the team members quickly put together a Zello channel. Zello is an app used by the Cajun Navy, and I can tell you as a member of the State Guard, we also use Zello when we're doing emergency operations. It is a way to communicate with boots on the ground to get them to homes needing help as soon as possible. The team went to homes helping move furniture, boats, jet skis, et cetera, to higher ground. We also had requests to help put sandbags around homes. As the team went to the houses, they also helped surrounding houses in need. They made note of the address so we could go back and help after the water receded. As posts on the community boards got buried quickly, a flood assistance group was created on Facebook so we could keep the requests for help in one location so we could get to them quickly. As we are a caring community in a crisis, the community was wanting to donate cleanup supplies and money to help the flood victims. Carla Hinaosa Berry, owner of Casa Mexico generously offered Casa Mexico as a central location where people could drop off donations. Salima Harbison stepped up to the plate and took the lead gathering a team of her friends to man the donations. As flood victims came in to get supplies for cleanup, they gathered dames of those that needed help. As the water started to recede, the requests started coming in to help muck out houses. The street team consisted of the following members: Mike Nichols, owner of Lone Star Contracting; Amy Adams, owner of Amy's Green Clean; Jeremy and Brandy Withrow; Darnell Powell; Jeff Eschenberg; Lily Hughley; Willie Samaripa; Dustin Yielding; Larry Straylaw; and John Moody. Some of the team could only come part-time and not every day due to their jobs. Two of the team members came every day, no matter what, and they were Mike and Amy. The team worked tirelessly from sunup to sundown for two weeks, mucking out and doing demo work on houses. Mucking out and doing demo on houses is extremely hard work and can be hazardous to your health if you do not know what you are doing due to the mold. We were fortunate to have Mike and Lily, who both had experience helping in other disasters in the past and knew what to do and what equipment was needed, keeping the team safe. We went house to house in the hardest-hit area, making sure of all the homeowners, making sure all of the homeowners had the help they needed. All of these people went over and above to help their neighbors. Willie Samaripa has limited vision and is legally blind, but he came with Lily every day for three days, working hard. Now that is what I call helping your neighbor. There were numerous other people who also helped at one point, be it helped put out sandbags or running supplies out to the team. The community pulled together to help those in need. So, proclamation, City of Lago Vista, Texas. Whereas Governor Abbott issued a disaster proclamation on 19 October 2018 certifying that the severe weather and prolonged flooding event that began on 7 October 2018 caused widespread and severe property damages in Lago Vista. And whereas the City of Lago Vista, Texas takes great pride in being in the heart of hill country and in maintaining the beauty that makes us a great place to call home. And whereas, in response to the anticipated flooding and the flood damage that occurred, a group of dedicated individuals took it upon themselves to gather together and assist the property owners that were impacted by the flood damage. And whereas, these dedicated individuals volunteered their time and energy to muck out and remove damaged property within the homes of their neighbors. And whereas, local business owners provided their property to assist with the collection of donations and assistance for those impacted. And whereas, these individuals exemplify the ideals that we want our community to be known for with neighbors helping neighbors and people stepping up to act in a time of need. Now therefore, be it resolved that on this day, the city council of the City of Lago Vista, Texas does hereby proclaim December 6, 2018 as Flood Street Team Day. In witness thereof, I have hereunto set my hand and have caused the official seal of the City of Lago Vista, Texas to be affixed this sixth day of December 2018. Ed Tidwell, Mayor. Is there anybody? Is any of the street team here? No, okay. Well, you have a day anyway. And if you would like to come and get a copy of the proclamation, we have some for you Anybody else have anything? All right. We will now move to presentations. Item number one, mobile solution for the City of Lago Vista. So I'm going to give you all a little bit of background before I introduce our speaker for this topic. As you all know, as council members and staff, we attend certain things throughout the year, and one of them is a TML conference. And at the TML conference, there are several people that offer services to cities. Well, that's about as far as it goes. It never makes it to the eyesight of the citizens of Lago Vista. And over time, I would like to present things to the citizens of Lago Vista that could be beneficial to our city moving forward, helping us with efficiency and growth and things like that. So, I know this is a little out of ordinary to see somebody like this come and give a presentation, but that's the purpose behind this. And at this time, let's see, where's my, there it is. I would like to welcome Lee Little, the CEO from Barzy Mobile Development.
Hi, I'm Lee Little with Barzy Mobile Development. We're out of Austin, down in the Westlake Hills area, and our company works with communities. We probably have 40 or 50 mobile solutions for communities in the state of Texas. As you know, 90% of the folks that live, work, and play here in your community are on their iPhones or Androids roughly four to five hours a day. This is a primary source for receiving and getting information. So what my company does, and I'm going to ask you to flip a slide for me if you would.
Should we click it right?
Oh, there is one, okay. I'll use, let's see if I can get that right. So, people are on their phones literally five hours a day. What my company does is we put together custom branded iPhone apps, Android apps, and websites that are branded to your community, follow your logo, and provide a wealth of information about the community. Where to eat, where to drink, where to stay, where to play, real estate, events that you have. And this is something that is available and can be made available through, I'm going to hear some of them. This can be available at no charge, and it will be completely branded. Rather than print a visitor's guide or a business directory or an entertainment guide, this can be done onto an iPhone or an Android. So, we've done work over there with Abilene and Granberry Texas and a host of them. My company's developed about 700 iPhone apps and Androids apps. And so, let's see what we've got here. So this is a platform which could be actually interesting for you. This is one that is actually set up so that if your school district wanted to be part of it, you can have a section for the schools. I saw you have your golf courses, they can have a section in there, the city can have a section. Any entity in your community has a section inside the app. And what we're doing is allowing them to go in, update, and change their content whenever they want. Very handy to be able to use push notifications when you do have flooding issues or weather advisory, or you just want to brag about something that happened to the school, you have push notifications. So we have a platform that you can use to communicate with folks. It will sit on the Apple App Store, the Google Play, and if you want, we have a responsive website. So today, before I came here, I started looking at learning about your community, okay? And so, I went to the city website, I went to this, and I went to that. In my platform, you can integrate all those into one mobile solution, and it answers the question of what's going on in your community, where should I, you know, what are the resources there you can do? So this product, what you see up there on what's going on is events are the number one thing, breaking news, you can put in any kind of categorization of information if you choose to, and you can completely update it whenever you want. So you're going to see some, there's one that we did for Port Lebatte. We have others here with Granberry. And so, many times when we build them, so Midlothian, the city of Midlothian was wanting one of these, and they would have a section for the chamber, they have a main street, the CDB for tours in the school district and the city, all under one umbrella, and that's what this product does. We find it very effective. We have analytics back on these things as to how many people download the app, where they're going on the app, how do they use the app, and you can tweak your content if you choose to. So, let's see, what else we have? In the back of it is what we call a CMS, or a Content Management System. This is where someone can go in and say, we've got an event at the school, and I can put in all the information about the event. It supports video, images, text. You wanted a link to have an update on Facebook, you can have a running list of Facebook there. You can do it also if you want to follow Twitter. But you can also put in commercial information about the various businesses in town, for where to eat in town, where to stay in town, real estate. So it's pretty expansive as to what you want to do. So my company has put this together, and let me see if I got this, and it's loaded with, without going too technical, the, one of the things that most cities like is a reported feature. Reporting where the potholes need to be done, or we got trash in a park that needs to be done. The gentleman who's building the trails, that's pretty cool. You can actually create trail walk and information on the app. So we have a reported tool in there. We just finished one with the city of Orange down in the southeastern corner of the state. They used our photo submission program. Every year they have a big fall carnival, and people were able to submit photos from them having fun at the carnival. But probably the biggest one is the fact of being able to send a push notification, sort of like a code red, but to be able to send a push notification that the school can send one, the city can send one, any various group can send it. It's going to be on an iPhone, it's going to be on an Android, it can be on a tablet if you want. And so it can be a wealth of information. Unlike anything that you're doing in print, this can be changed as often as you want, and the updates are nearly instantaneous. So here's an example of some of the things that you could do. If you wanted to put all of your businesses in town, over on the left, you could have a basic list if you want, where you'd have all the businesses listed, or you can go into an enhanced listing with images and text. This is a location aware app. I don't get out to Lago Vista very often, but when I'm here, I'm on my, using Google Maps to find that restaurant or find wherever it happens to be. So this provides turn-by-turn navigation in here as well. So you can also go in and support video, you could support Facebook, Twitter, Instagram, Yelp, hours of operation, and you can get very rich in terms of what kind of content you want to put in here. So, I think I just talked about this in terms of the various features. We have two models. You can buy this and our platform, and we'll show you how to put it together and work with you. Some of, half my customers do that, or if you want, we'll put it together for you, but then we go and sell advertising to the local businesses as our source of revenue. So, it really depends on your objective. The fact of the matter is, these devices aren't going away. And more and more, this is a green solution. It allows you to have an information source that is community-wide. Let's see. And so some of them, I'm going through some of the Texas markets. We've done Midland, Odessa, Port Arthur, Beaumont, Orange, Granberry, Port Lebatte, Bay City, Deer Park, Northwest Houston, I'm probably missing some Canton. So whether it's a small community or a large community, they're recognizing that this is a pretty viable solution. So I'm giving you some examples. We do find- We do find, interesting enough, that the targeted group for this type of content is usually about twenty-five to sixty-year-olds. It's going to appeal to not only locals, but people who are considering visiting the area or people considering relocation. So we do, this is a GPS-enabled product. So turn-by-turn navigation. Where the gentleman had a trail, trails, I don't know if he's here or not. But I literally can have it say, you're here, and go to point A, point B, point C in a trail-type thing. I've done historical home tours. I've done civil rights tours, civil war tours, on mobile apps as well. So if you wanted to create like a seventy-two-hour guide to Lago Vista, this platform would do something like that. And so one of the things is, is that people are on these devices so often that it's actually replacing what time you spend on a TV, what time you listen to radio. They're on their devices. So you can actually design this to provide daily updates and, if you want, on the product itself. So weather is a feature that we have in here. Local news can be added in here. And if you have websites, technically, we can integrate one website to another. What was the website you guys use?
Revise.
Revise, yeah. So they can give us something called an XML feed, and that would allow for your backend CMS to talk to ours so it automatically uploads the content. So we do that with quite a few folks. The reported talk is what I talked about earlier. This can be used in a variety of different ways. If you want to talk about, report trash that needs to be picked up, report that you got a pothole, report, you know, even high school sports games. What this does is it collects information from the users. They can send you a video, a picture, or text. It will be timestamped and location stamped, and it'll go to a specific email address. So it could go to Parks and Rec, or it can go to police services if you want. So all of that can be added in. So it's a way for communities to submit content if you use. And then we have analytics, as I mentioned. You know, you can look at how people are actually using the product and decide whether you want to change this or add this. And you can literally morph the product as you follow through. So anyway, we have a website if you want to see it as well. So it's an iPhone app, an Android app, and a website. That's included if you wanted to do that, that's fine. And so it's kind of hard, let's see if I got, if you're looking to make money on it and turn it into an advertising vehicle, there's plenty of ways to do that as well. It's kind of hard to show some of these. I think in my information packet, I shared with you some of the examples. I think the Granberry app was in the form that we submitted. Midland, I don't know if you guys had a chance to download them. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
I have a couple of questions. What would be the cost to engage your business?
So in the first model, where you buy it and we show you examples of how to do it, and you're putting the content into the CMS and you're taking ownership above it, we charge nine hundred and ninety-five dollars as a setup fee and six thousand dollars a year. It's a software-as-a-service program. That includes hosting, it includes the operating system upgrades. There's some other minor charges, like you're going to have some graphics, and you're going to need to get an Apple and an Android developer account. But they probably, guessing, are no more than five to six hundred dollars with graphics being the biggest one. So looking at, you know, sixty-nine ninety-five the first year, and probably another four to six hundred dollars of other fees that would be mainly someone to do the graphical look because everything would be custom. And then you need an Apple developer account and an Android developer account, which are ninety-nine dollars a year and forty-five dollars one-time fee for the Android.
So we're talking about roughly about two thousand dollars a year?
It's six thousand dollars for the base product with a setup fee of nine ninety-five. And then a one-time fee for graphics. And then you have your Apple and Android developer accounts, okay?
My other question is, is there a free trial period where we could try something like this before we're actually committing to it?
We used to do a demo account where you can actually try it. I don't recommend that we do that. What I would recommend is just looking at some of our products that we've done for other communities and start thinking about what are the kinds of, what are the things you want to tell people who live in the community or visiting the community? Because this is a branding tool so that you can brand your community. It's, honestly, it's mobile publishing. You're publishing instead of a visitor's guide or a relocation guide, you're doing it on digital. So I don't have a tool. I would just let you look at some of them, and we would talk you through some of the things. But unlike print, you can change this and morph this whenever you want to change it. If, for example, you wanted to do a fall school preview as getting back to school, and after that, you want to take it down. Many of my apps right now are promoting their Christmas activities in the community. And so after Christmas, that's going to go down. And they're going to talk about major events in their community. Events are a big deal. Most people want to know, hey, what's going on in my community? They want to know about where to eat, things to do. It's basically quality-of-life kind of things that they're looking for. And as was mentioned, not everybody's on Facebook. But this one, people can download it, and you can have a relationship with them. Yes, sir?
Can you provide us a list of communities that are actually using this app?
Absolutely. You actually, on my website, you guys have computers in front of you. My website is Z-Civic. Z as in zebra, civic.com. And I have another one called Z-Newsroom. But under Z-Civic, under my list, I have all my clients. And you can see those right there. And we have a team of around seventeen people down in Austin, and we're building these on a regular basis. Okay? So rather than me give you a print list, we keep that updated all the time.
Okay.
Yeah.
You said that the six thousand dollars was if we own it?
You don't own the code, you're renting my code.
Well, right, but a six thousand dollar a year fee.
Yes, it'd be six.
What if we have you do it?
Well, if I do it, I don't know, I didn't see, do you have a Chamber of Commerce here?
Yes.
Okay, how big is it?
Pretty good size because it represents.
How many businesses?
Jonestown, Lago Vista, and Point Venture. It's, the list I had was, I think, three pages long.
I don't know how many businesses. But it's more of a regional chamber?
Regional chamber.
So it represents more of the western portion of the county, northwestern portion of the county, not just our city.
Okay. Well, that, the other model we do in some markets, if they're big enough and they have chambers behind them, is that they'll provide me their chamber member list, and I will work with the chamber, and we sell advertising on the app. We put a sales team in the market, we sell advertising. The cities would still pay, and then the various groups could still pay. But then we're responsible for putting it together and keeping it active and current throughout the year. And so I actually hire digital editors to keep the app updated and fresh. And we're working to keep, you know, making it seasonal and really keeping it so that people will be current with it, so it's not stagnant. You don't want something like this to be stagnant. You want it to be updated.
And what type of fee would the city have to pay in that situation?
It would still be the six thousand dollars. It wouldn't be the, it would not be the nine ninety-five setup fee. But in that case, what I'm doing is, I'm doing the work of getting your content in, and you're not having the manpower doing it. And I'm also making sure throughout the year I'm updated on a regular basis to keep it current. And some cities like that because they don't have the manpower to do it. Others are like, well, we'll just take care of it, and you show me how to do it. So it really depends.
How many cities you have that are like our size? We're about seven, seven thousand.
Fairfield, that's three thousand. Wilson County, down south and down near San Antonio, I think it's probably in the ten thousand range. I have probably a dozen, two dozen in this range. And I'm doing right off the top of my head. We have products, Emerald Isle, North Carolina, that's like ten thousand people. I have customers all over the country, so. Size is really not that element. It's folks that are recognizing these things aren't going away. They want to make sure that they have something. Groceal, Michigan, there's one. Probably about five to six thousand people, and they use the app constantly. And so I literally, we've been doing this for, since the iPhone first came out, so we've got quite a few of them. So we've done tourism apps, we've done city apps, we've done chamber apps, we've done college campus apps. I've done line trail apps. So we've done quite a few different ones. I've done national park apps and state park apps. Glen Rose, Texas, that's about the same size, I would say about this. We have a nice one there called Portland Rose, and they use that on a regular basis. So people are doing them. And if you get a chance to look at them, I think there was a list that we submit there that's out there, okay? I don't know what you have in your budget for print cost or how much you pay for printing, but you could consider that this could be an alternative to some of your printing costs, okay? Many of my apps have the ability for you to pay bills online. So, you know, you don't have to stuff paper. Okay, now, it's not going to happen overnight, but it's an alternative for folks to do so. So anyway, thank you very much for the time.
Thank you.
If you have any interest. Mayor, you know how to get ahold of me. If there's any otherbody that has questions, I'd be more than happy to answer those for you, okay?
Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Now we move into our action items. Number two, discussion and consideration of Resolution Number Eighteen-Dash-One-Six-Seven-Four, a resolution by the City Council of the City of Lago Vista, Texas, providing for the election of a mayor pro tem. All right, bring that up. Okay, each year after election, City Council selects mayor pro tem from among the seated council. Position of mayor pro tem, as laid out in the city's charter, acts as mayor during the disability or absence of the mayor, and in this capacity shall have the rights and duties conferred upon the mayor. Article three, the City Council, Section Three dot O two, number selection and term of office stipulates that the council shall, at the first regular city council meeting, following the taking of office of all new members after each scheduled general city election, elect from its membership a mayor pro tem. So traditionally, the position rotates based on seniority. Okay? I have six new council members up here. Three, three with one year, and three with a few days. So in looking at my council members and trying to evaluate who I would like to have serve as my mayor pro tem, I looked at, you know, who had the most experience with the city of Lago Vista. And this gentleman had ran for city council several years ago on a couple of occasions. Was finally successful in two thousand and sixteen. And at this time, I would like to make a recommendation for Dave Williams to serve as my mayor pro tem.
I would second that motion.
So I have made the motion. I have a second. Is there any further discussion? Dave, would you be willing to accept that position?
Yes, I would.
All right, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, nay? Hearing none, David, you are the mayor pro tem.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank the council.
You will now have a new seat right here. So if y'all would.
Circle off the buffalo.
Chris, you can't leave.
Thank you.
Do you have anything you would like to say to the?
Sure.
Don't go in the corner.
Put me in the corner.
Now you're making Sanders switch all the names.
Just on this side.
Well, again, I'd like to thank the mayor. I'd like to thank City Council, to the community. I enjoy working with the council. It is not an easy task. There's a lot to learn. I've learned a lot in attending a lot of the meetings with the whole city council. And I've grown with this city council, and I look forward to working with the new people. And all, I hope that the community knows that I don't have a hidden agenda. I kind of look at the information that we provide and try to look at the different options, and I will continue to do that. You know, people say that we're hasty. I don't think we're trying to be hasty. I think we'll look at all the different options and work through it. And I look forward to working with everybody in the community. And anyone that wants to talk to me is welcome. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, and welcome. What? Oh, of both of us? All right. We now move to number three. Signal preemption contract with text discussion and possible action. All right. Says Josh is the lead on this, but he's not here, so I will take this over. Chief Donnie Norman of ESD One has requested from the state to add a signal preemption equipment to the traffic signal light located at the intersection of fourteen thirty-one and Lowman Ford Road. We have provided the agreement between the city of Lago Vista and TechStop for furnishing, installing, and maintenance of the equipment. Recently, the city chose to install the equipment to the new traffic signal located at Lowman Ford and Boggy Ford Road. Signal preemption allows emergency vehicles to interrupt the normal operation of the signal light to allow for entry into the intersection right of way. Chief Norman is working on securing estimates for the installation. Our estimate is approximately fifty-five hundred dollars. If y'all don't understand quite exactly what a preemption is, you may have seen it at an intersection. If you're sitting there and a fire engine or ambulance or police or something like that comes up, they have a device installed in their vehicles, and then there's another device on the light system itself that picks up the signal and will change the light to allow the emergency vehicle to go through the intersection. As a driver for Austin Fire Department, these are quite handy. They make it much easier for us to get through intersections, especially if there's a, if there's a long wait at those intersections. And with the new fire station going up on, just off of fourteen thirty-one, they will be, ESD One will be using that intersection a lot more than they are now. And so they have asked for this.
Mr. Mayor, is this the same system that they have in Jonestown?
Yes, the same system in Jonestown. Well, I don't know if the exact system, but it's the same type of system. And we put one at Boggy and Lowman when we put that system in.
Mayor, I think I was talking to Chief Norman the other day, and he said that we could also put these on the police cars. And for each car, I think it was only about a hundred dollars for the device on the car.
Okay. I'll take your word for it. Danny?
Well, yeah, honestly, Mayor, it's more prudent for, really for the fire department's use than it is ours. Well, yeah, honestly, Mayor, it's more prudent for, really for the fire departments using it. Our people typically don't respond from a particular location that are already on the field. And we can navigate intersections a lot, a lot easier than the fire department.
But it is something you could use if it was.
Certainly could utilize.
If it was available. And Chief, how many, how many squad cars do we have?
I think fifteen, thirteen, well, including the other two on board. About thirteen are actual patrol units.
All right, so this is the first time we're hearing it. But it did say possible action. If, if we don't have a lot of questions or discussion about it, if you don't, if there's not research, we can take action on it. But what this would do is allow us to submit our agreement to Tech Stop for their consideration. And then if approved by Tech Stop, the signal would be installed. So this is just us saying whether we want to proceed with it or not. And then it's gotta go to Tech Stop for their approval.
Mr. Mayor, I've spoken with Donnie about this, and I think eventually it's something that we need to not only have at the intersection of Lowman fourteen thirty-one, and we also need to think about putting one at Dawn and Lowman. But Chief Donnie told me that this takes quite a while to get through Tech Stop. I realize the fire stations are not completed at this point, but if we want to have this in place by the time they are, it's something we need to get to work on. So I would make a motion that we approve the agreement for the furnishing, installing, and maintenance of the traffic signal preemption equipment.
I'll second it. Right, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? And all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Hearing none, motion carries unanimous. We will submit to Tech Stop. All right, number four, council liaison appointments. All right, so it is at that time of year. Our committees, their terms expire at the end of December, December thirty-first. So next council meeting, we will be selecting citizens to fulfill the vacancies that we have coming up at the end of December to start the next year, twenty nineteen. What we need to do tonight is go through our liaisons, our council-appointed liaisons, and make sure we've got all those set in place so that you can go back, review the applications, and on December twentieth, come to us with your recommendation on, on committee members. So, let me get my notepad here. All right, I thought I was gonna get a sheet with who was already assigned to what committees, but it's not in here.
Do you want us to just tell you?
So, let me go back through here real quick. I'm gonna pull this up just so I make sure I don't miss something. All right. All right, so I'm just gonna go down the list here. So Airport Advisory Committee, that is open right now. It does not have a liaison for it. So I am looking for someone to be the liaison for the Airport Advisory Board.
So can we hear all the openings before we decide who's gonna do what, maybe?
So we have the Airport Advisory Board, we have the Board of Adjustment, the Building Committee.
The Building Committee is Arch.
Right, he just wanted to hear all of them. Let's see, some of these are not current. Golf Course Advisory Committee, the Library Advisory Board, the Parks and Rec Advisory Committee, Planning and Zoning,
and Economic Development.
Economic Development Advisory and the Youth Advisory. However, Youth Advisory coincides with the school year and is not up at this point. So.
Mr. Mayor, the four that are currently open is the Board of Adjustments, the Library, the Airport Advisory, and the Parks and Rec.
The Board of Adjustments open?
Didn't you say you didn't want?
So.
Right, correct.
Currently, Arch is the liaison, but he has three?
Well, I had, I had three.
Buildings, Board of Adjustment, and.
Charter Review.
Oh, and Charter Review. Anyway, he had asked to relinquish the Board of Adjustments.
Could I volunteer for that?
You sure can.
I've, I served on it, so.
So Tim has volunteered for P O A. Tim, well, we haven't approved it yet, but Tim has thrown his name in the hat for the Board of Adjustments. All right, so we have Airport, Library, and Parks and Rec.
Be simple, if I just took those.
Do what?
I'll just take.
No.
Can't take them all? How many can I take?
One, one initially.
Well, I guess that, they were, those were Suzanne's committees.
I understand.
Well, except for Airport. Airport was Kevin's.
Right.
Don lives at the airport, so I'm recommending that he not be the Airport Liaison just because he's a property owner up there.
Well, he's also, you're still president of the.
I'm, I've stepped down from, I have not yet, but I'm planning to step down from the president of the P O A. But I, I also feel like that might be a conflict of interest, but whoever takes that position, I'm, I'm willing to help them understand it.
So before he takes them all, would you like Library or Parks and Recreation?
I'll take the airport, if Rich won't treat me badly.
Frank, you'll take the airport.
Okay.
How about Parks and Rec?
I'm, I'm happy to do that.
So we have Library, Parks and Rec. And Library meets how often? Once a quarter, right? And Parks and Rec meets?
I'm, I'm happy to do both of those.
I think Parks and Rec also meets once a quarter, so.
Is Economic Development, is that something that's already spoken before?
Yeah, that's what, I have that.
That's you, okay.
Yeah. Is there anything open? Uh, that was, that was the four.
There are five.
Huh?
Airport, Board of Adjustment.
Library, Parks and Rec, Board of Adjustment. No, there's just four, okay.
So, I'm sorry, you were looking at?
Uh, Park and Rec would probably be my first choice, and I'd be happy to do the Library also. Unless someone else has some specialization in that area, I do not. And I'm definitely not specialized at golfing.
That was not. Golfing is mine.
Okay, you got it, you're keeping it?
Do you want, do you want Library, Frank?
I wanted Parks and Rec, but Don's got it. That's what I said a minute ago.
Oh.
I thought you were just jumping on everything.
He was.
All right, so here's where I have Airport is Frank, Board of Adjustments, Tim, Library, and Parks and Recreation for Don.
Got it.
And everybody else remaining with their committees that you have.
Okay. How we go into K O V B too, so.
Yes, okay.
And I'm gonna, and I'm participating with that Trail Conservancy Group. I think they're on to a really good thing there. I, I don't know if we can create a position for a liaison for them.
Well, we have, like, K O V B is not an official committee of the city anymore, but we do send, we do send a representative.
Yeah, Suzanne was.
So, yeah, you can definitely be the liaison for the Trail Conservancy. I do the Youth Advisory, and I do outside agencies. So I do CapCog. That's the only one right now, is CapCog. But we may have others, we may have, we may have others come up.
Two officially, one.
Ron used to do a lot of work with some water development stuff on the outside.
I've got that.
And he's doing those. So we have, we have different outside things that we send liaisons to, but they're not official things set out in our charter.
Are you happy, Frank? So are you just on one at this point?
Yeah, that's okay.
All right, so we have our volunteers. I would welcome a motion.
I'll make a motion that we accept the volunteers and the liaison positions that they've said they volunteer for.
I'll second.
Arch seconded. Did you get those names? All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Right, hearing none, motion carries unanimous. So now you're all tasked to go back and review the applications for the people that would love to serve their community on a committee. And on December twentieth, we will review those. All right, number five is a discussion item. Discussion regarding an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Lago Vista, Texas, amending Appendix A fee schedule, Article ten dot zero zero zero, Parks and Recreation fees to modify ten dot two zero zero golf course fees, providing a savings clause, providing a severability clause, and providing an effective date. Let me go back over here and find my packet. Okay. And Chris, you have the lead.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, it's working.
You just gotta speak up a little bit.
I, I, I don't need to speak. So I do, I apologize.
Lift, lift it up so you don't have to. Yeah.
It's not on.
Go ahead and shout.
She's already changed the batteries once. Is it even on? Is it turned on? Just speak loud.
Yell at us.
See, it sounds like it when you pull it out of the thing.
There we go.
Yeah, it's working.
Okay, now it's working.
Yay.
Yay. Good evening, Mayor, City Council members. I'm here tonight to discuss a possible increase to the golf course grain fee rates. As you know, in two thousand, was it, yeah, two thousand seventeen, we reduced the fees based on course condition. Over the past year, we've improved the golf course substantially, increasing rounds by twenty-five percent, and revenue at about, about a hundred thousand. We did a comparative analysis of other golf courses in the surrounding area. We went from Burnett down to Marble Falls, crossed to Lago Vista into Cedar Park, and down into Austin as well. And what we found is that every single one of our rates, every day, seven days a week, any timeframe you could possibly look at, we were lower than everybody. And when the new rates were implemented, there was a reason for that, because our course condition was not up to par with the other ones. We feel now that our golf course does compare to just about every golf course you will go play in the central Texas area. And that is why we're here to try and get those rates increased. Um, the, the proposed rate increase is we're looking to increase our weekday rate, Monday through Thursday, by two dollars across the board, and three dollars across the board Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and holidays. And with, with that increase, you will see in your packet, there's a rate comparison compared to the rates that we have proposed. And we are still lower than everyone, except for Point Venture on the weekend. We are still not higher than anyone other than Point Venture. That's all I've got.
Chris, let me ask you a question.
Yes, sir.
This is just, this is just weekday and weekend.
Yes.
This doesn't have anything to do with annual or any of that.
No, we're not.
Is there a reason why you didn't take it up to like Crystal Falls or Point Venture or to the, to the actual dollar figures that they have?
Well, the, the thought process behind it is we didn't want to go too high, too fast. We want to, we want to build it slowly, but surely. We don't want to go and raise our rates by ten bucks, and then everybody's like, whoa. We don't want to, we don't want to.
Four months or five months down the road and want to take it up to that.
No, no, it, it will be a, it will be a gradual increase every year, every two years, depending on how the golf course improves over that timeframe.
Cool. What's the projected additional revenue?
The, we're projecting, where'd it go? I lost it. Um, but, um, I believe the number that we came out with was about sixty to sixty-five thousand dollars additional. And that was from, and that was in a nine-month timeframe. We went from January through October of seventeen, and then based on our projections for two thousand nineteen, we're projecting additional sixty to sixty-five thousand.
Are you concerned that the number of rounds may fall off if you increase the, the rate by two dollars a round?
No, because we have the product to, to warrant it.
How will dynamic pricing affect the Golf Now, and are you raising those?
Yes, so the dynamic pricing will, will raise in conjunction with the price increase. So right now, we have dynamic pricing set up as you can go five dollars higher than rack rate and five dollars lower. And we'll, we'll keep the same, that same formula, just use the new, the new rate. So for example, on a Saturday at forty-three, dynamic pricing would kick it up max to forty-eight and low to thirty-eight.
Is primarily gonna cover operating costs or, well, some are going to improvement, additional improvement?
Yes, and, and a lot of it is driven to help offset the revenue we lost in that the, in October and early November with, with the cold, the wet, the rain, the flood, Mother Nature just not liking me for some reason. It's, it's a way to help offset some of, some of those losses that we, that we incurred early on in the year.
I have another question. Do you have the ability to, to change the rate on Golf Now, that, that sort of thing? In other words, if you were to raise the, the rate, the typical walk-up rate to two dollars more per round, and you did that with Golf Now and the other venues that, that appear there, could you change those seasonally? Or would you, would you be prepared to change those seasonally? Because I think we would probably all agree that in the winter times, there's less play than there is in the springtime and the, in the summer. So my, my fear is that if you raise the rates in the wintertime, that.
So my, my fear is that if you raise the rates, um, in the wintertime, that it'll have a negative effect on the number of rounds played. It is anyway because of the, just the nature of the beast with, with it being what it is.
Right, well, you're, during the winter, you, you don't have rounds, whether it's at $35 a round or $37 a round, when it's 50 degrees and raining, nobody's going to play anyway. But, but the, the thought process behind it is the rack rate would stay the same, but as weather changes, we would run specials in-house that would help knock those, that would knock those prices down a little bit to entice players.
But Archie, Archie, Mr. Mayor and Archie, you're, you're talking about all the different courses that are around us and we're still, I mean, Delaware Springs at $39, Point Venture's at 40, Crystal Falls at 42, and he's talking 37. So I don't think he's going on daily play on people that don't have memberships. I mean, these are not people that have memberships. These are just people that are walking up. I don't think it's.
All those courses have short game areas, putting greens.
Yeah, we're missing the, you know. Be nice to get our driving range back.
We're working on that, too.
Do we have a comparison in terms of the number of rounds played at the other places like Delaware Springs? How many, how many daily fee rounds are, are played there versus our course?
I do not have that number.
See, that would, that would factor into, you know, whether or not it's advisable to, to make the, the change.
Well, and we, we feel like the change is necessary. Me, one, one number that threw out in the beginning was we increased rounds by 25% from the, this past fiscal year to the previous. Show me one golf course in America that's raised rounds by 25% in a year.
Are you gonna, you see any of that being repeat business?
Yes. A lot of it is repeat, but an additional people coming back out and seeing the improved, the improved conditions from what they were in 2016 or 2017.
When is, when does this go to the Golf Course Advisory Committee?
Uh, the Advisory Committee won't be meeting again until probably January. And we're looking to, we're looking to have the rates effective January 1 at the beginning of the year. And the reason for that is we have other programs that we're working on, um, upgrades to Pro Shop that all will line up together along with this. That was our target date.
Do you have enough flexibility, if you see this as having adverse impact, to adjust?
It would just come back here if we were to, if we were to say, oh, well, we raising too high, we need to go back, then we would have to come back. But again, I don't see a, a $2 increase or a $3 increase making a, any significant impact on people wanting or not wanting to come play.
This also, this also requires a public hearing as well, correct?
I believe that is correct.
Will be, is that going to be on, going to ask for that to be on the December 20th agenda?
Yes, sir.
Mayor, this one's been advertised. And so the public hearing has been advertised for December 20th, which would be the second hearing for this item.
Who's the liaison? Do we need, do we need to consider a joint? Meeting, council? If, if they're not meeting again until January?
That would certainly be possible. My personal feeling is that the Golf Course Advisory Committee would say that this is something we need to do. I know there was discussion among our members that our late rates were low to begin with. So I'm not sure that we would come away with anything, but I'm saying, yeah, let's do it. But we could, uh, arrange a meeting with Chris, myself, and Josh, and, uh, some of the members from the, uh, committee to discuss this and see what their attitude is.
All right, any other questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Sandra, please note that our city manager has arrived. Amongst all the ballyhoo. Right, public hearings in action. Number six, the Lago Vista City Council is holding a public hearing to discuss and consider ordinance number 18 dash 12 dash 06 dash 01, an ordinance of the City Council of Lago Vista, Texas, amending the official zoning map by changing the zoning district of a tract of land consisting of 4.3546 acres of the WA Cook Survey number 100, abstract number 2605, and located on the south side of Boggy Ford Road, immediately west of the intersection of Draper's Cove, from the TR1 Temporary Restricted Zoning District to the R1E Single Family Residential Zoning District. And if I'm not mistaken, this is still open from?
Yes, sir.
From the previous meeting.
Let me start by apologizing on behalf of the applicant. Uh, he contacted me very late this afternoon and both, uh, he and his son, who are the owners of the property, are both under the weather and just were unable to, to come up here. And they, he expressed his, his sentiment that if y'all feel it's necessary to defer it because of his absence, he certainly has no objection to that. Notwithstanding, uh, that issue, this is in fact a, a piece of property that has, uh, carried the temporary, uh, zoning district designation for quite a while since it was annexed. His current plans are to pursue a 18 single-family residential lots. There are a number of impediments to that, which he is working through. He's hired an engineer to see if it's going to be affordable for him to comply with Highland Lakes Watershed Ordinance. That remains to be seen, but nonetheless, uh, he wanted to pursue, uh, some zoning classification, uh, which he seems to be entitled to, uh, rather than keep that temporary designation, understanding that, uh, it's certainly possible that he'll come back in front of you with a different one if, if it turns out he can't develop these as single-family lots. Anyway, the vast majority of the property in the, in the area is currently zoned, I believe it's R1C, although there's a smattering of other zoning designations in the area. As for those of you who are following the preliminary plat, uh, approval process, he reduced the number of lots to make sure it was compatible with the frontage there, uh, that was in the area. The only difference between the designation that he is elected to seek is that, uh, it reduces the, uh, minimum dwelling size from 1,700 square feet to 1,500 square feet and increases the allowed height, uh, that's designated from, uh, 15 feet to 18 feet. And like I said, there are a number of, of zoning designations scattered out throughout the area that, uh, are also 18 feet and in some that are even smaller in terms of the allowed, uh, you know, minimum dwelling size. And of course, that doesn't include the, the required garage.
This is, this is fairly well-vetted by planning and zoning anyway, isn't that correct?
Yes, sir. Although, once again, it, it's, you know, the, the primary distinction between the preliminary plat and the final plat is that all the improvements have to be in place. And those are the big stumbling block. Those improvements in this case, because of the, the, the nature of the lots, uh, the narrowness of the lot, may require some, some underground improvements that can be quite expensive.
The other thing that.
Could we get a map of where this is? For instance, page 65. Could you put that up?
Frank, this is right at, uh.
I know where it is. I'm trying to get a map on the screen so folks can see where you can.
It has to be pre-arranged, yeah. And.
Wow.
Yeah.
So it's, it's a long thing. But the, uh, Mr. Mayor, the other thing that P and Z was concerned about was the, it's right there at Boggy where Highland Lakes and, and Boggy come together and.
That is a strange configured intersection, no doubt. And.
And, uh, P and Z was concerned about, uh, the getting out of, onto the, onto the roads, out of the driveways.
Right in, right out.
Right, and that has been discussed.
Yeah.
Although, you know, some other improvements to that intersection may ultimately be warranted notwithstanding this development proposal. There you go, if you. If you get, full screen might help, but, uh.
It's the blue.
Yeah. There we go. Now I can advance it. So.
The zoning designation, that doesn't.
Yeah, it, it, once again, it's entitled to something other than the TR1. It's sort of an anomaly that we let, you know, the purpose of a temporary zoning designation is to give staff and the property owner time to discuss what it ought to be zoned. I don't know why that didn't happen and, but that's happened in a number of cases in Lago Vista. So.
So with the, because of the location, streetwise, and the, uh, size of the lots and the concerns with the traffic and stuff like that, is the.
That caused him to reduce the number of lots and, and to something that's certainly consistent with what every, you know, his, his frontage is, is the same as the lots across the street and in, in the surrounding area. He's not asking for anything that everybody else in the area doesn't already have. Once again, uh, the difference is, is because this is an undeveloped tract, he's going to be subject to meeting the Highland Lakes Watershed Ordinance.
Right.
And that may be a, a, a burden. He's hired an engineer and that, that process is, is just being initiated and, uh, it's not insubstantial. Don't get mad at me if I'm coming back with a different, you know, request in six months or so. It's certainly possible.
Roy.
Yes, sir.
I go in down this street every day. And there's no question that the houses that are on the other side of Boggy do create somewhat of an obstacle in getting up and down them.
Right.
But I don't know of any accidents that we've had there yet. And I don't know that you can tell this person that he can't build here or he can't have a house there just because there might be a little effort in getting out onto the street.
And there, and Eric will, of course, you know, particularly as you get closer to those intersections and as they develop, uh, he'll have to very carefully consider where driveways need to go and we have the authority to dictate that through the permitting process.
That's all part of the permitting process.
Yes, sir. It's not part of the zoning per se.
What you just said was one of my questions. I don't think you have that authority. It's a discussion we had. There's nothing, unless you can point to me where in our ordinances, it, you have a process or a standard that allows the city engineer to dictate driveway location or configuration. I don't, I don't think that's there.
I would prefer that it was in the subdivision ordinance, but there is a driveway permit that you have to acquire. And, uh, it's, it's issued by the building department and it gets an engineering review. It is in fact a separate permit.
So you're indicating that yet, I guess it's a legal question, without having a standard or a process to review in our ordinances, you can, you can still determine where the driveway can go on the lot?
Once again, I, I, I don't disagree that, that the subdivision ordinance should include a bunch of standards regarding access management in this exact issue. The fact that it doesn't, you know, notwithstanding that, there is a driveway permit. And presumably that's subject to some sort of review. It's, you know, if, if it meant nothing, why have it? Defer to Dottie.
Of course, I don't have any of these ordinances in front of me, but typically the, um, engineer looks at the distances from the street and there's more exacting.
Right, site distances, all those things.
From the building code, I believe. But we're on zoning right now. We're not on, uh, driveway permits. So you really, your discussion should be more of zoning and then we can find the answers on the driveway permit question and provide that to council.
My question was, the, the R1E with the smaller, is that, would that be the recommendation from staff based on the location and?
The lot sizes, if anything, the, the smaller footprint, uh, might preserve more opportunities for turnarounds and that sort of thing, uh, for people to not be backing out. That's the concern. That was certainly s, uh, part of the basis for asking for larger lots that the, uh, that the applicant agreed to and, and realized that, that actually might be preferable and the lots might be more marketable that way. You know, the, the other part of that discussion was, is invariably in Lago Vista, you know, whatever extra paving you have ends up being a places for boats and jet skis and that sort of thing. And maybe it wouldn't be available for a turnaround anyway. But, uh, obviously we can't dictate how people use their, their property and their driveways, but, uh, you know, the best thing we could do is make sure that there was room to address that problem as best we can and within the, the limits of what we have.
And our recommendation from P and Z was to approve this?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Okay.
I'd make the comment that, uh, P and Z, uh, I guess with the, uh, build, with builder, uh, came to the agreement that, uh, going from 15 lots to 18 lots would alleviate some of the, some of the problems with.
It was actually, the original thing he had was 20 something lots. I gave him 25.
But, but they did agree, I mean, with P and Z's approval, they went to, to 18 lots.
We, we mentioned to him in the staff report and he voluntarily, you know, between the, the hearings, he came back, it was approved subject to that change and he agreed to it and, and made the change and.
And that, and that provided, um, 80-foot, um, frontages.
Minimum, some of, the, the ones at the end are a little bit larger.
Some are a little bit bigger. So that makes it a little bit easier for, uh, for access in and out if, if.
It certainly gave the ultimate builder the opportunity to do more with a wider lot.
Oh, there is an alternative that's related to zoning, although I, I'm not going to take exception to what the P and Z recommendation is. But the alternative's a PDD zoning district where you can dictate a number of different standards to include where the driveways go.
And that was brought up. The, the idea was is he never voluntarily applied for that.
Right.
And he's entitled to something and, you know, this, this is what he asked for.
Yeah, I'm okay with P and Z's recommendation.
We, we, we tried to push him there and, and he might eventually have to go there because of the water problem, uh, because that may require some common property to affordably solve, all that sort of thing. So don't be shocked if he doesn't come back with a PDD, but it'll be his decision. We, we tried to push him, it didn't work.
All right, this is a public hearing, so if there's anyone in the, the owner's not here, but if there's anybody else who would like to ask questions or, it is open. All right, well, hearing none, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing portion of it at 8:20 PM.
Mr. Mayor.
I have.
I would make a motion that we accept ordinance number 18 dash 12 dash 06 dash 01.
I second it.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed nay? Hearing none, motion carries unanimous. All right, we will move to number seven. The Lago Vista City Council will hold a public hearing to discuss and consider ordinance number 18 dash 12 dash 06 dash 02, an ordinance of the City Council of Lago Vista, Texas, amending the official zoning map by changing the zoning district of Lot 81C less 2,936 square feet. official zoning map by changing the zoning district of Lot 81C less 2,936 square feet, more or less, as conveyed to Travis County of the Lago Vista Civic Center Addition subdivision located at 6,300 Lowman Ford Road from the C1C Professional Business Office Low Density Retail Zoning District to the C2 Commercial Large-Scale Zoning District. This public hearing is still open, and we'll start with presentation.
Yes, sir. As you gentlemen recall from months past, we rezoned a piece of property that was on the northwest corner of Dawn and Lowman Ford. The gentleman that owns the property on the southwest corner became aware of the, based on the discussion of that gentleman wanting to market his property, understanding that future work of the P&amp;Z will likely modify some zoning ordinances, districts, and the definitions, and likely heavily restrict the C1 uses as described to professional offices in very light retail. Not wanting to wait and become nonconforming at an inconvenient time, he decided to avail himself of that right, understanding that in general, as you're aware from other applications in the past, the comprehensive plan in the future land use map recommended that most of the property along Lowman Ford Road be increased to what they refer to as regional retail. And certainly, this is one of those properties. However, as you'll find out in another application or another public hearing that's on your agenda, in that process, we discovered what we simply believe and P&amp;Z agrees, that there were some oversights and corrections to that map. They weren't reconsidering those properties, they simply limited their discussion of what they thought were simple errors. And this was one of those properties. This property was not designated as being regional retail, but, like I said in the previous applications, this is a signalized intersection on the same piece of road where they were making that recommendation in the middle of a block. And that applicant is here.
So by going from low density to large scale, is it going from low density to...
Yeah, and that's one of the anomalies. You know, normal zoning districts, you know, and I describe them a little bit different, but, you know, typically, you have at least three commercial districts, and they have to, you know, the typical definition has to do with how friendly they are in terms of being immediately adjacent to residential. You know, B1 or C1 is typically what you don't mind living next to because it's offices and that sort of thing, doesn't stay open at night, those sort of things. The C2 is typically not large scale, it's, you know, neighborhood-friendly sort of retail. And then you have another designation, which we do have, I think, in Lago Vista, only at C6, and I don't think there's a single piece of property that has that designation. They created it, I guess, to start correcting this, but the use matrix hadn't been corrected. You know, almost, and like, and this may be familiar to you, I mean, we have C2 uses allowed that, you know, I wouldn't want to live next door, too, and I assume other people wouldn't. And that's one of the things that we intend to correct, but that's one of the things that we want to correct comprehensively, with the idea of mixed-use districts, relooking at the residential districts to where they, you know, are compressed a little bit and start relating to density and those sort of things. You know, some of these things are fairly easy to correct in a focused manner, some of them are not, and this is one of those things. It's, you'd rather kind of do it all at one time and solve all the problems to make sure that everything works together. But that is the more traditional thing, and that's one of the things we want to correct, and that this gentleman is reacting to. He doesn't want to, you know, all of a sudden have all his tenants be nonconforming, you know, without being prepared for it, so to speak. But the intent is, is that, you know, convenience stores, for example, that we've had in front of you before, those are allowed in Lago Vista in the C1 district. We recommend that the two new convenience stores that are being considered, go ahead and rezone it now to avoid potential nonconformities in the future.
Got it.
You know, we feel compelled to inform people that that discussion is ongoing and likely to happen. It's not a matter of if, it's probably a matter of when. And what's holding it up is that comprehensive approach.
Are we going to have to do this for the two locations across the street, too?
They're already C2, yeah.
So this is the last...
Although the map is incorrect relating to them, but their current zoning is already C2.
So this will make all four corners C2?
Yeah, and in fact, you know, there are some industrial uses right behind that C2, as you're aware. It's not industrial zone, but it's in, they're industrial uses. Believe it or not, some of those are zoned residential. I haven't figured that out yet. That might even be a mistake. We think that might be a bad legal description on a previous zoning application, but we're still researching that.
Roy, this location, it's on the corner, the only thing that's behind it is the school and office buildings.
Right.
There's no residential to be concerned about.
And that's what they did when they looked at the map, you know. The idea was, don't change everything on Lowman Ford, just change the things on Lowman Ford that probably are not viable as residential uses. That's the map correction that'll be in front of you in a few seconds.
This property is still zoned commercial anyways, C1C?
Right, and it's the description. That's supposed to be offices, and we want it to be offices someday.
But, I mean, there's no real problem with it being in conflict with any other properties around it that are residential, so...
It has had a beauty salon, which is a fairly traditional, you know, C2 use, although in, if you go back far enough, beauty salons were in people's houses once upon a time, but that hasn't been true in recent years. But they've decided they're more commercial in nature and not as neighborhood-friendly, but the current best practice is to consider that as, you know, a C2 use.
Mayor, would you entertain a motion?
Well, the public hearing...
We have to close the public case.
It's still open, so if the owner would like to speak on the behalf...
My wife and I are here, I'm Webster Veed and my wife, Mary Ann. We own the property, the corner of Dawn and Lowman, we've owned for going on 13 years now. The beauty salon that's there, there's been a beauty salon in that unit for eight years, and the two-thirds of the building is occupied by Tuta Italiano, which is a coffee shop. And based on the current usage, this really would fall under C2 use, and we don't want to be in a situation where they changed the usage that's allowed under each zoning, which is a modification that they're talking about doing, and then all of a sudden, our tenants are in a nonconforming status. Also, the fact that the property that is on the north side of Dawn, which was in the meeting before us last month, was approved to change to C2, leaving us as the only corner on Dawn and Lowman that is not C2, and really would make more sense if all four corners are C2. The two, the property that we have is, it's been built, it's been there for 13 years, we, it's built to the max of the usage of the property, there's no intention to add on, no intention to modify or change. We're simply doing this to bring us into conformity with the other three corners, as well as in conformity with the tenant usage that we currently have, which are going to be long-term. So particularly for you, Councilman Collins, because I know you weren't here at the last meeting when we discussed that, basically, all we're doing is bringing the zoning into alignment with the actual usage of the property. And there isn't going to be any change in the usage, and going to be any change in configuration of the building, just so that you know. Thank you.
Do you want else from the public that would like to make a comment? All right, at this time, I will close the public hearing at 8:30 PM. Council discussion, action.
Can we make a motion to approve this?
You may.
I would like to approve the ordinance of number 18-12-06-02 to change this from C1C to C2 commercial.
I'll second that.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Hearing done, the motion carries unanimous. Right, number eight. The Lago Vista City Council will hold a public hearing to discuss and consider ordinance number 18-12-06-03, an ordinance of the City Council of Lago Vista, Texas, amending various sections of Chapter 3 Building Regulations and Chapter 14, the zoning ordinance, too. Exclude the LI Light Industrial Zoning District from the exterior finish requirements applicable to most other multifamily and non-residential zoning districts to eliminate superficial attachments as a means to avoid regulations otherwise applicable to accessory structures, and to better define and regulate the locations where industrialized housing may be used for new residences or additions. And this public hearing is also still open.
Yes, sir. These are, as opposed to some of the ordinances that will be coming in front of you in the near future, these are more what I would call little minor Band-Aids to fix opportunities, if you will, to, for people to build things that are assumed to not already be legal, although that may not apply to the first case. The first issue we addressed goes back quite a ways. The city's rezoned a bunch of property on the east side of the airport runway with the intent of making the, encouraging industrial businesses to locate up there. The anomaly is, is that based on the regulations as they're worded today, you can, you're, will be immediately adjacent to some existing residential structures and hangars up there that are pre-engineered metal buildings, and yet, the requirements for the new light industrial buildings require there to be 75% of a much higher quality material. You could not, for example, have it look just like the buildings that they were immediately adjacent to. They had to be 75% masonry, stucco, or a number of other materials that are not cost-prohibitive, but it would certainly make those buildings perhaps non-competitive with the other businesses that, it made the locations less desirable. Councilman Sullivan had told me when I first arrived that that was something he wanted us to look at, and had made that request to P&amp;Z. I did not realize until I did some other research exactly how often and how long ago he made that request. So anyway, the long and the short of it is, as soon as we were in that general vicinity of the ordinance, we made that change, and it's simply, there's already an exclusion where those requirements don't apply. It's to the airport, the C4 properties. We simply added the LI to those. Currently, those are the only light industrial properties within the jurisdiction. And once again, I would emphasize, there are light industrial uses, they're just not zoned light industrial. So, you know, we will, we will need to be careful where we give that designation in other locations, because the construction standard will be greatly decreased. Let's see. And of course, the second one, this is one that you've seen people that built very large accessory buildings, and they were metal buildings, and which everybody, you know, there is an ordinance, the large accessory building ordinance as it exists right now, you know, requires you to match the house if the accessory building is a certain size. However, the definition of a large accessory structure meant that it couldn't be attached in any way, shape, or form, and that's what it needed to be to be a large accessory structure. So people were attaching it to the house, and of course, turns out, we didn't have any standards for what additions to a house could be. That simply closes that loophole and comes up with a definition that basically makes it, you know, a legitimate addition to the house. And then at the same time, we looked at the definitions of industrialized housing, strengthened them up a little bit, and suggested that industrialized housing had to be located in the manufactured home district only unless they met an exception that's required by state statutes, having to do with the value and all that. Now, it is not just geared solely towards pre-engineered metal buildings. The other form of industrialized housing that we get a lot of calls about, and we are fearful of them showing up in your neighborhoods, is, you know, container houses as well as modular homes, that if you saw them, you would think they were manufactured homes, even though they're not. The basic distinction being that they meet the standard building code, standard residential code, and they're not licensed, you know, by HUD, the way a manufactured home is. But if you looked at them, you wouldn't know that there was much difference in them unless you went looking for the seal. To most people, they would appear the same as a mobile, or not a mobile home, per se, a manufactured home is current nomenclature. Those are the three things we attempted to fix. It has since come to our attention that there's maybe a couple of words that might need to be changed in large accessory structure, having to do with nonconformities. But since we're working on some of those exterior material requirements that might increase those nonconformities, we might suggest waiting and dealing with those after we look at those material requirements, which ought to be coming to you in January or so.
So are you saying your recommendation is that we wait until January?
No, no, this ordinance is fine. Remember last month where the lady mentioned a house that she thought did not meet the ordinances as they existed?
Right.
Well, it made me carefully look at those, and there's some soft language about what you do when a house does not meet the current material requirements. And it could be misinterpreted to say that if you build a large accessory structure and the house does not conform to the current exterior material requirements, that there's no requirement for it to match the house. And I don't think that's what was intended, but you could argue that it says that, and we'll clean that up, too. It's just that understand that with the material requirement changes that we're contemplating now, there will be a whole lot more nonconformities than there are now. And you may want to address that in a different way, and we want to have a very conscious discussion about that.
Anyone in the audience? It's open to public hearing. Yes, sir. Name an address for record, please.
Okay, my name is Howard Hoover, I live at 891 Barkay Ranch Road. I sit on the building committee, and I want to thank Roy for all his help. We're going through Chapter 3 and Chapter 14, trying to revise it, clean up the language and that kind of thing, and then make recommendations to you, the city council, for how we can better that code and take out, because if, right now, you check Chapter 3 and you go to Chapter 14, it may say, you may be able to interpret completely two different ways, you know, ones in 3 and ones in 14. Well, we're trying to clean that all up so that it only can be interpreted one way, and that's the way the city wants it, rather than, you know, the way any builder would come in and say, "Well, I'd rather do this than what the city wants." Yeah. So, okay, and thank, I want to thank Roy, because he's really been a big help. Yeah. Thank you, thank you, guys, for everything, I appreciate it.
Thanks, Howard. Thank you. Right, anyone else? All right, hearing done, I will close this public hearing at 8:40. And it is open for council discussion or action.
Mayor, I worked on these ordinances years ago. Let me just say, this is a big improvement. This is not easy stuff. It's complicated. Mobile homes, modular homes, industrialized housing, there's a bunch of state law associated with it. I think he's done some great work on all three fronts that he's spoken about. I think he's closed the loophole about the RV barns that has been ruining some of our neighborhoods, and so I would just like to thank the Development Services Director for his good work, and Mr. Hoover's left, so we missed him, but the building committee and P&amp;Z have vetted this. Therefore, I recommend the council approve this.
All right, you want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I move that we approve ordinance eighteen dash twelve dash oh six dash oh three.
I second it.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Hearing none, motion carries unanimous. Thank you, sir.
This one's gonna be easy.
No more.
Two more.
Only one's mine.
Number nine, the Lago Vista City Council is holding a public hearing to discuss and consider ordinance number eighteen dash twelve dash oh six dash oh four. An ordinance of the City Council of Lago Vista, Texas, amending the future land use map component of the twenty thirty comprehensive plan adopted by ordinance number sixteen dash oh five dash oh five dash oh two regarding specific property at various locations fronting Loman Ford Road and near the intersection of Dawn Drive.
Yes, sir. As, as, as I've alluded to on, on both of these zoning cases in this area, we saw what is seems to be an inconsistent map when you read the narrative as it explains the, the future long-term ideals for how Loman Ford's gonna be developed. We didn't go looking to, to rethink that map, we simply looked for what the Planning and Zoning Commission thought to be were, were simple oversights. They, they thought that this was consistent with the narrative, the discussion that was going on in the public hearings, and people do make mistakes with the, with the mapping, and they think that's what's the case here. Anything that was possibly to be used as either multifamily or residential, in any the remotest sense, it was left alone. There, there was no desire to be aggressive and to rethink the problem, it was simply to correct what was thought to be errors.
All right, questions? Okay, public hearing's open. We have one mem, two members of the public still here. If y'all would like to comment. All right, if not, I will close this public hearing at eight forty-three PM. And it's open for council discussion or action.
Move approval of ordinance eighteen dash twelve dash oh six dash oh four.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Hearing none, motion carries unanimous. Number ten. Public hearing, public hearing and discussion on ordinance to amending Appendix A Fee Schedule, Article three dot zero 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 Building Related Fees, to amend Section three dot one zero zero Building Permit Fees, Article five dot zero 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 Subdivision Fees, Article six dot zero 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 Utility Related Fees, to amend Section six point one zero zero Impact and Tap Fees, and Section six point two zero zero Utility Rates and Fees of the Code of Ordinance. And I will open the public hearing at eight forty-four PM. Staff presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and Council. As the Mayor mentioned, this is a public hearing, and it's just for discussion for tonight. We'll come back at the next council meeting for a vote. A very quick presentation, it's, there, there's a lot of fees that we're changing, consolidating, just explaining them a little bit better that our citizens can understand better also. I'll use this thing here real quick. There we go. All right. Just a very quick background, how did we get here? So originally, we had nineteen ninety-four, there was a line extension, original line extension that the city created, and about six years later, the city decided that, okay, we're gonna give a hundred fifty feet free to all, all the residents that want to come in, in, in the hopes that that would spur some residential growth. And that has worked out fantastically for the last fifteen or eighteen years. So earlier, this past year, that hundred, the council considered a hundred fifty feet and removed that concession, and development has not slowed down one little bit. And there was that concern. So the current proposal is to update our fees based on what our contractors are charging us, so, and, and, and we'll see here in just a little bit how that's all organized together. So in the last year, we had about eight hundred, uh, two hundred and eighty permits, and we're on track to meet or exceed that this year if all goes well. And we have hired two contractors to help us with all taps and line extensions and trying to save some of our staff and equipment and material time to do some infrastructure maintenance. So how much does this cost? We try to budget for it, and we're just, it's, it's costing a lot of money, so, and is it water, cost more, or is it sewer? Both pretty much the same, they all cost, when a house comes in, you get a water tap, you get a sewer tap. You either have utilities or you don't have utilities at all. That's pretty much how, pretty, a big portion of the city is, is served. And, and I get this question a lot, and why does it cost so much to put a water line in? Okay, you, you, sometimes you gotta hire, hire trench or equipment that you don't really have. You gotta, you gotta call locates, what they call call locates, make sure that you're not cutting any utilities. You hear it quite often, hey, I'm, I'm out of power, or I don't have internet. Well, somebody made a boo-boo somewhere down the road. You gotta purchase materials, you gotta assemble them on site, you gotta install the utility line, you gotta backfill it, you gotta, and there's a waiting period. We hear a lot from developers say, hey, I gotta, I gotta tap, but I have to wait, what's the deal? Well, we gotta wait, gotta make sure that it passes all the tests, you gotta make sure that it's safe to drink, gotta pass bacterial ecological tests, and at the end of it, remove debris and everything else, so that's why we've also hired contractors to help us do that. That's why it costs three dollar signs. So how were the current fees that you guys have in front of you, how were they proposed? So, our original intent at, at, at the start of the budget year was to create sort of a revolving account to see if the money that comes in would equal the money that we're spending. We haven't quite been able to do that yet, but we're working on it. But we have been able to somewhat figure out what the best fees are that we should charge. And we have several departments meet together, and was, this wasn't just department heads, this was actual staff that deals with customers and that deals with day-to-day work of the department. So we had utility building, public works, GIS, Development Services to review the fees. And as, as far as tap fees goes, we determined that, okay, well, whatever the contractor's charging us, that was fairly easy, we just charged an extra seven hundred fifty dollars on top of that, which is our typical cost for, we, we gotta buy a meter, we gotta set up the meter, we gotta buy a meter box, and we have to program it, so there's, there's some time and materials that we spend there. On the line extension, that was a little bit more complicated, because one, in the past, we typically just, we used to charge our customers just a typical flat rate fee, but our, our contractors charges us, they, they, they charge us for a, a line extension fee, plus on top of that, you gotta have valve. Whenever you have a line extension, you really need a fire hydrant somewhere, you know, you don't want your house to burn down. So, and when you have line extensions, you have to test it, that costs a lot of money. You have to do chemical samples on it, and that, and you have to send it to the lab, so that costs money, so that adds up. For a long line extension, that unit price goes down, but for shorter line extensions, the unit price per foot goes up once you sum it all together. So we determined, we looked at all our records, and we determined that a two-hundred-foot extension was our typical for the city. And we, and we established our fees for line extension based on a typical two-hundred-foot line extension, which is, it can be two lots, so you basically go two lots over. So, and then there's some other fees in there, which clarify certain development fees. We have some plan review fees that we moved from building regulations down to subdivision regulations, and those are engineering-related fees, which make a little bit more sense. And, and we also added fees for those who illegally connect to our water system, we've had quite a few of those. People are getting incredibly impatient for their water meter, they, they don't want to wait for the bacterial ecological tests to come back, so as soon as we put in a valve and ready for, just waiting for the results to come back, they just want to hook up to it, and who cares whether we have a meter there or not? So, we have something in place now, hopefully they'll, that will stop. So the current fees for tap fees, just a typical standard tap fee, and, and, and the impact fee for typical residential home is about ten thousand eight hundred fifteen dollars. So we're proposing to increase that to twelve thousand six hundred fifteen, so we're looking about twenty-five percent increase for a typical single-family home. And then the, the other way to look at it is, you have future homes really paying for themselves versus the current customers and the current residents paying or subsidizing for future homes, which is kind of what we've been doing now. So, staff proposes, and, and council, at your discretion, we can honor the existing estimates that we've already created for customers, that last time we did this, we didn't, we didn't honor the existing estimates, and it, it made it very difficult and some very, very angry customers and home builders, but, so they weren't quite happy, they, they got an estimate, and we told them that that was no longer valid. So, as, as I mentioned earlier, we charge the actual fees for taps, plus seven hundred fifty dollars per tap, which is our city cost for taking care of this, as, as you see there. So, these are the tap fees. There used to be a fifteen hundred dollar street cut fee, we removed that altogether, we standardized it into a short service tap or a long service tap, and then describes it, and describes it in the ordinance what that all, that's all about. But for, if you see there, for a typical sewer line, it goes from thirty-six hundred dollars to forty-five hundred dollars. For a three-quarter inch meter for a long service tap, it goes from thirty-six hundred again to forty-five hundred. We, let's see, we do have, we did place in there a gravity sewer line. With all this growth, we found out that, you know, a gravity sewer tap is a lot more expensive than just a typical tap, and we're, we're bleeding money on that side, because a lot of developers would look at, oh, where's, there's gravity sewer, I'm just gonna buy that lot because I don't have to have a grinder pump. So we've been seeing quite a few, quite a few of those, and as, as you'll see, that long service tap for a gravity sewer is fifty-two hundred dollars.
Question?
Yes, sir.
It, it's, and I can't read it, that's my fault probably.
You do have a packet that you can just look at if you'd like.
That's in the packet?
Oh, that one is actually not, I'm sorry, for the new fees, there are, yeah.
I don't think most of your presentation's in the packet.
No, the presentation is not, the fees are, sir.
Oh, no. Well, my question, my, I know, I know the fees are there. And so, I would like to get this in, in the backup for the next meeting, his presentation, I think that's real useful for me anyway, to keep on hand.
We'll do that.
Folks ask what's this about, because I think your presentation's really comprehensive, I appreciate the way you're headed. Does that particular page show what the fees are now and what we're going to?
Yes, sir. What you see?
And is that all of them that we're changing?
No, sir, those are, those are the main ones that we're changing. The, the, all of them are in your ordinance that you have in front of you, and they're shown in green.
Can you, can we get, when we, when we see the, the next packet, what the fees are now, and what, all the fees, what they are now, and what we're going to?
Yeah, absolutely, thanks.
One, page one fifty-eight shows the proposed fees, but it doesn't have the comparison.
Right, that's what I'm looking for.
Yeah. Yes, sir. Certainly do that. For line extensions, is, and what you see above, that's the current fees that we have, the current fee schedule, and it's split up into if you're outside the pavement area, if you're in, under the pavement, if you're under concrete pavement. What we found out is that we tend to charge our customers on, based on outside pavement area, because that's our GIS assumes, okay, they're gonna put it, but the contractor, when he goes out there, says, there's no way I can put a utility line in a ditch, I have to put it in the pavement, so we end up paying the contractor to put a utility line in the pavement, whereas we're charging our, our customers for utility line not in the pavement. There's a big difference. What you see down below is a comprehen, it's, it's a very, some, it's a very condensed version of those fees, and, and, and much higher fees, rather. So you, you'll see, we just go from, from a twelve inch, it goes from a hundred and ten dollars to a hundred and forty-six dollars for a ten inch, from a hundred dollars to a hundred and thirty-six, and so on, all the way down to two inch, which pretty much doubles in, in the, in the cost per foot of the extension. As, as I mentioned, council, this is, these are fees that our, our contractors charge us, and this is what we're paying our contractors. And, and these fees don't have an added-on cost for the city, with the exception that previously council, council approved an ordinance to where it depends on the, who the applicant is, the city may charge five, ten, or fifteen percent on top of that. Yes, sir.
So the, so the new fees that you're creating here, going back to the example that you just gave with the, having to deal with the pavement, is it built in for you to be protected then, in the new fee?
It is, we, this, it is built in as an average.
Okay.
It's, we're, this is not set up to where the city makes money, this is simply set up for the city to cover up, cover its costs. So we made an assumption based on what the majority of, of our applicants request, and that is typically a two hundred dollar, oh, sorry, two hundred dollar, two hundred-foot line extension, and nine out of ten times, it ends up being in the pavement, which we'll have to repair and replace.
Is there anything that you're doing to protect you from that situation where you don't go in the red? You're protected in?
We are.
In breaking even on that?
This is not set up as a guarantee, unfortunately, this is set up as an average, where some will, will, the city will make enough money to cover up some of those areas or some, some extensions where the city may lose money.
Could you set up a, a rate where you charge by the foot?
That's what we have.
No, but I mean, you're talking about doing like an, an average length, I'm saying, if it's two hundred and twenty-five feet, then it's two hundred and twenty-five feet that you charge for, not two hundred.
Well, that is what we're gonna charge, but we evaluated, we analyzed it based on a two-hundred-foot extension. Because the more, the longer you extended, the less the contractors charge us, the shorter the line extension, the more they charge us per foot. So it gets incredibly complex, and if we were to try to figure out, it would have this chart with a gazillion different options in it.
Could you do it a hundred foot at a time? One hundred, two hundred, three hundred?
We, we are charging per foot, so if somebody comes in and wants a five-hundred-foot extension, they're gonna, let's say they want a five-hundred-foot extension of an eight-inch line, they're gonna have to pay for five hundred feet times a hundred and nineteen dollars per foot. What, what I was saying is, we simply analyze it based on a two-hundred-foot extension, because that is the majority of our, of our line extension requests.
Did, did I understand you to say, though, that if it's a shorter, if it's a shorter run, then the cost per foot is greater?
Yes, sir.
To do, okay, that's what, what I was trying to clear up.
He basically, what they basically did is took the average. So, now, somebody that's doing a hundred foot might be getting a little bit less than what it actually costs, but somebody doing three hundred is actually paying more than what it would actually cost.
That is correct.
So, he took the average, and then they go by foot on that.
How many open commitments do you have now? When would you want to start this?
Currently, we have, we have fifty in the books as far as customers that have paid the fees, and typically, it's a two-to-one ratio, so for every two customers that come in and request an estimate, only one of them ends up developing something. So we probably have a hundred out there still pending.
That's pretty good.
Yes, sir.
So your typical line run is in the street, correct?
Nine out of ten times. That's why people are complaining about street cuts not being repaired.
And if you had those exceptions, couldn't you just charge for those exceptions? And if you had those exceptions, couldn't you just charge for those exceptions? I mean, still charge for the pipe, but now I got to break up concrete. I'm charging you to break up the concrete.
We can if we want to do it that way. We just haven't had that many instances to where we go under pavement because the contractor would rather just stay in the asphalt pavement rather than go under a driver because once you get closer to the driver, then all of a sudden you got these fancy mailboxes you got to deal with.
Mailboxes and everything else, yeah. Okay.
And we found out that people are very upset about their planters.
Any questions for me, council?
Um, darn it, I had one, I forgot it.
Yeah, this is a public hearing and there's no action tonight. We'll.
You have a lot of activity, don't you?
Lots going on.
Mayor, this fund's different. With our general government funds, obviously we don't worry about covering our cost all the time. It's a, it's a general service that we say that our taxes are going to pay for that. People do that. The enterprise fund or joint utility count has to cover the cost and this is something this council's looked at, previous councils look at. It's why we have the utility cost of service update in process right now. It was ordered by the, the council in the last budget saying, we need to look at these numbers. It's a challenge that Eric sees every day, that Starr sees every day and we have to make sure we're, we're covering those costs because enterprise fund should at least pay for itself and make X percentage of dollars to support itself over the life of, of the party, basically. And so, looking at these numbers, we know the growth's there. We know that we're getting new utility accounts that are giving us dollars, but as Eric pointed out in the, in the presentation, if everyone else that already has a house is subsidizing the future growth of homes, that's a huge issue and, and that's the main point of everything with joint utility. It, it's horrible, maybe they just left when I showed up, but I assume you have 50 people in here earlier and they're not here now to hear this part of something that's, that's a big issue. This is a huge issue because it's, it's me paying for that next person that's going to build over on Mockingbird and that's just not right. It's enough to, to buy my own house, but now I'm paying a tap for somebody that Frank invited to come into town and that's just, I don't even know that guy. And so, it's just imperative. I know most people understand that, but we hope that the people watching really grasp that topic of two totally separate funds and the mindset that council has to use looking at these topics.
Eric, on the, with our contractors, so the fees they charge us?
Yes, sir.
Do they get to adjust them at their whim or when they come in, are they tied to these fees?
The contractors, the contractors, we have a set contract with them that they charge us a set fees for different components of the infrastructure they install. They just don't charge us price per foot. They charge us per line item that they install. So, every time you have a line extension, you have to have an 8-inch valve, you have to have line extension, then you have to have a blow-off valve and then you have to have a sample point. It just gets very complex. So, they charge us for each one of those components.
I just wanted, because we're basing it off of what they, what our contractors.
Exactly. Yes, sir.
I just want to make sure that, you know, we set these fees and then next month they're like, oh, well, it costs.
It's, it's, it is very probable that we'll come back next summer or next fall and we may have new contractors, we'll have new contracts and there may be different prices that we're being charged and therefore the fees will, may have to be adjusted to what the city's expenditures are at the time.
But those fees from the contractor are locked in for?
They are locked in for the time being. Yes, sir.
Six months, a year?
There's, until the city decides that either contractor is not performing or they believe that there may be better or lower, or contractors that may charge lower, lower fees out there. So, when we hire the contractors, contractor, we have to advertise and we have to award a contract, which the guys did in the past.
Right.
If you recall, we selected two contractors, ordinary and a secondary contractor.
And, and the length of their contract is what?
There's no time limit.
There's no time limit?
No, sir. It's a unit price contract without a family and unless the city decides otherwise or unless the contractor decides otherwise.
Good.
All right, there's a public hearing. If the two of y'all would like to say anything.
They're just here to be entertained.
All right. Well, we will go ahead and leave this discussion open and we will move to the consent agenda. All matters listed under consent agenda are to be considered routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will not be separate discussion on these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. We have the approval of October 18, 2018 council meeting minutes and approval of resolution number 18-1775, a resolution by the city council of the city of Laguna Vista, Texas, declaring various property and/or equipment to be surplus property and authorizing the city manager to dispose of such property in a manner which is beneficial to the city of Laguna Vista. 12, let me see, surplus summary sheet. Did it have that?
Yeah, surplus equipment is the next one.
So, we're looking at two vehicles?
Two vehicles.
So, there was also?
Some equipment on exhibit, exhibit B.
And we got a?
Something on, from Dottie on the golf course, too.
It said we got some equipment on the golf course, but I don't think it was in your packet. It came as a separate email today.
Mayor, if you want to add that one, then I would recommend pulling that item from the consent agenda and then moving forward consent agenda and then discussing that item so that if you choose to add it, add that sheet for the golf course items, that you do that in a motion.
All right.
I'd make a motion that we remove it from the consent agenda.
Second. All right, I have a motion in a second to move the summary surplus, summary sheet on surplus equipment from the consent agenda and be heard separate. Any?
With that, I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda minutes.
Hold on, we haven't, we haven't voted on the first one yet.
Oh.
So, I have the motion and I have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, so now we have two separate consent things to address.
Well, that's removed from the consent agenda. So, the only thing left on the consent agenda is the minutes from October 18th and I make a motion that we approve those minutes.
Second.
Second.
All right. I have a motion in a second to approve the minutes. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, nay? Hearing done. Minutes are approved. All right, now we can discuss the surplus equipment.
Mayor, the item that I referenced was emailed out later, not included in the agenda. So, my recommendation to pull that item is in case council would like to consider adding those, the golf course items that were sent via email to the surplus list, then you would need to change your motion to include that list.
What's on that list? It was plates. Is it on mine?
Mr. Mayor, my question would be to our city manager, the items that are on these lists are all items that are no longer serviceable to the city. Is that correct?
Mayor, yes. So, these items, a lot of times we look at them, for example, as Mayor Pro Tim just said, plates at the golf course, they're past their usable life. The vehicles, we've taken the items that we can use off the vehicles and we don't have a use form any longer. So, we have vetted them, use what we can use and we feel confident that we can remove these items from our list and clean out some space.
And it was one fryer, one cooking range, one storage cabinet, one microwave and some old pieces of old kitchen equipment. Where's my phone?
It's all that stuff that's down there in that old building, in that side building.
So, are we adding it to exhibit B?
That would have to be included in a motion.
Okay. I make a motion. I'd make a motion that we add the golf course surplus list to exhibit B, which is all the other stuff we're trying to get rid of and I don't know what else to say.
I'll second.
D is in David.
D is in David? Okay.
All right, so I have a motion to approve the resolution for surplus property with the addition of the golf course surplus list as exhibit D. Forget it. Have I received a second on that?
Yes, I second.
Okay. So, I have the motion and I have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, nay? Hearing done. Motion carries unanimous. We can sell the surplus equipment.
Yes.
All right. We now go to discussion, discussion regarding appointments, boards, commissions, and committees.
I thought we were doing this on the 20th.
Mayor, we put this item on here. We emailed out separately the updated list of all the applicants. We want to make sure that council has the information, the individual packet prior to the 20th so that you can have any discussion. Same as everything else, we feel that it needs to have two different readings by the council and we would like people to understand how the council reviews this process and the importance of placing people on boards and committees that, that they can be useful to and that they can have value to community.
Are they supposed to be in here?
We didn't include those, mayor, in the packet. Didn't want to include the individual applications in the packet, so we sent those out separately due to not providing contact information for citizens. So, that was, each of those in the one packet was sent out to the council. Actually sent out two versions because we changed something and had one individual provided another nine pages to his or her resume and we want to make sure you had all nine pages.
Does anybody have questions on their boards, commissions, committees and the process or?
Yes. Is, is this going to be the liaison to essentially nominate?
Yes.
Okay. Is this exec or open?
We did an open session last time.
We did an open session last time.
Last time we did it.
There were some, like Planning and Zoning Commission, I think you requested that those be heard in executive session. So, the committees that have some sovereign function of the government, like Planning and Zoning Commission, you can discuss them in executive session, but if they're purely advisory, then you would do those in open session.
So, that would then also cover the board of adjustments?
Board of adjustments.
Okay.
So, both. And since you were not here, Frank is now the airport liaison. Tim is board of adjustments and Don has taken the library and parks and recreation.
Great.
Frank is also going to go to the KLVB, even though that's not a, an official committee.
Thank you, sir.
And Don also said he was going to attend the trail conservancy meetings as a representative.
And mayor, I'll continue to act as liaison to the school district.
There we go. I knew there was another one out there.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Anything else on 13? All right, 14, city manager report.
Thanks, mayor. I appreciate mayor allowing me to be out for the first part of the meeting and miss all the fun, except for the fact I come back and all of a sudden someone named that guy as Mayor Pro Tim. So, I'm a little shocked. I promise I won't miss another meeting. It's just too risky around here. Just a couple of updates before Mayor Pro Tim starts speaking.
Well, just so you know, he didn't ask my permission. He just.
Well, you didn't tell me, don't go. It's not like you wanted me here in the first place. It didn't seem like. So, you've seen in the monthly report, we are catching up on the line extensions. We're very happy with that. Eric has already addressed that in his presentation. Those numbers are getting, they're dwindling down and hopefully very soon you're going to have it at a, as close to zero as you could possibly keep it with the growth and development. But they, but the numbers are manageable now and we've talked to all of our contractors. They are confident with our ability to supply the service and that's a positive thing for us. You're also seeing as a result of that, part of that catch-up that Eric already mentioned, we are actively working on street cuts. I know a number of you have had comments about open street cuts, lack of repairs. Our crews are addressing those street cuts. Eric's working with the contractors that are causing those street cuts, that are responsible for those. So, on two different fronts, we are attacking those, those different cuts. If you'll know, you can't do any type of overlay work on streets until you get those, those cuts repaired. You don't want to do that and then have an uneven type of situation. So, that's step A. We are, this month, you're going to see the first three overlay projects. Hopefully that'll happen before Christmas, weather permitting, but it's an overlay. It's an asphalt overlay. This is roughly a 1-inch to 1 and 1/2-inch overlay on three different streets. Those first three are Bluff Ridge Cove, Bullet Cove, and Bluff Ridge Trail at Bison. We're going to put together the notice that will deliver to property owners and by we delivering, I mean, the mayor's going to deliver those to the property owners. So, it's kind of a great thing. We're so excited about this phase of overlays just because people have mentioned this over and over again. That's not the only part of the project we're going to get on to. After the first part of January, we'll have the next three streets. That'll be Owens Lane from Patriot to Owens Cove and will include Owens Cove and then Orwell Cove. So, that's six different streets that we're going to have overlay on by the end of January. During January, our crews will be working to train on the asphalt over the lay-down machine that we're getting in this month. Once they get their training, we're actively going out to do some additional streets. During January to about May, our crew will continue to work on the street improvement plan that we've talked about. When we deliver that street improvement plan to you, then we'll have the larger plan that we'll use as our tool over the next five years to aggressively attack more streets and to make sure we provide a good, solid surface of our streets in this community. So, we're really excited about that. All of you have probably seen the high-pressure water line that we're working on. You see the crews out on Loman every day, every night. As far as we know, they're probably working right now because some of their crews are out late working on the project. Very excited about that project. It's, it's excellent to get it in, get it started and it's going to take a while longer, but once it's completed, it's a huge asset to our system. Cedar Break Park, we've pointed that out before. We're still moving forward. Still have to have that last permit. Soon as we get it, you're going to see active crews making things happen. I did mention earlier, the utility cost of service, that is in motion now. Not sure how long that'll take. We're signing that agreement with Melissa something.
Ellen.
That's her last name. And as soon as we get some information coming back from her, we'll gladly be passing that on to council. Last thing, just a reminder, we have scheduled our council retreat for the 17th. We'll crack, we'll start at 8 o'clock, so anybody that needs to sleep in a little bit, fresh at 8:00 and we're going to go through 5 o'clock-ish. So, we'll try and make sure we're done by 5:00.
And where's that location?
At the Marshall's Point House.
How do we get in?
It's a secret. It'll either be text to you or magically appear. We'll get you the information.
Top floor window.
Top floor. If you know someone that flies a gyrocopter, maybe they'll get you there. If not, then you might not get into the facility. That's all I have, mayor.
All right. All right, future meetings. Number 15, we need to consider our schedule and any items for future council meetings. And I believe there's already a list of some things.
We have the, assigned the volunteers to the various committees. Have the golf course fees and the line extensions on the next meeting? That's what I have written down.
May I have a question? When will we see the, the ordinance that will make the conversion of the building committee to a commission?
I don't know.
Good question.
Mayor, when would you like to see the ordinance that converts it?
Next meeting. Is it too soon?
I think we've already drafted it. Didn't Aaron already send it to you?
I do have it.
Yeah.
Just have to get it to the council and whether we put it at a 20th or we kick it to the January.
Well, that was approved in the, in the charter amendment, correct?
No.
Well, it has to be enabled by ordinance, though.
Right.
But that wasn't what was in the charter.
Ordinance.
To go to a commission wasn't a charter amendment.
That's correct, yeah.
Are we, are we going to work on chapter nine? Or is it whichever chapter it is that has the charge for each one of the boards and commissions?
Conflict.
Right.
I'll write that down, Mayor.
Right.
Yes, oh, absolutely. Say we're not talking about that.
I've got it. Chapter nine. We will put it in the channel to go the right direction.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
On our next council meeting, I would like to have discussion about the possibility of changing the golf course advisory committee from a advisory committee to the council to a staff committee. I've discussed this with members of the committee and have discussed this with Chris and Josh. It's our feeling that they can be more effective if they work directly with Chris instead of responding to the council than any efforts or anything that they wish done. Chris can bring that to the council. But it would give them the opportunity to work more closely with him to improve the course. And he's, he's good with that. And the committee members I've talked to were good with that.
All right, don't go too detailed.
I've gotten on the list, Mayor.
We're not discussing it tonight.
No, but we'd like to have that on the, on the agenda for the next meeting to discuss.
Just in case, we'll play that back and make that the staff summary. FYI.
I, I just have a real quick question. Does that say anything about the confidence of the advisory committee and its liaison?
Probably so, but...
That'll also be on the staff summary.
That's on the staff summary.
All right.
I, I would continue to be the liaison for that.
Okay. That is everything? All right, 16, executive session. 16, convene into a closed executive session pursuant to sections 551.071, advice of council, 551.072, real property, 551.074, personnel, section 551.087, economic development, Texas government code and section 1.05, Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct regarding: A, consultation with legal counsel concerning any regular meeting agenda item requiring confidential attorney-client advice necessitated by the deliberation or discussion of said items that is as needed. B, consultation with legal counsel in deliberating the purchase, exchange, lease or value of real property if deliberation in an open meeting would have a detrimental effect on the position of the city in negotiations with a third person, including but not limited to a lease with Laguna Vista Village. C, consultation with legal counsel regarding contractual claims or possible claims or charges, contractual modifications and questions related thereto. D, consultation with legal counsel and discussion or deliberation regarding commercial or financial information that the governmental body has received from a business prospect that the governmental body seeks to have locate, stay or expand in or near the territory of the governmental body and with which the governmental body is conducting economic development negotiations or to deliberate the offer of a financial or other incentive to a business prospect, including but not limited to an annexation development and 380 economic development agreement with KSW Holding LP. E, consultation with legal counsel concerning the participation of the city of Laguna Vista in the CAP Metro Transportation Authority. We will convene at 9:27 PM. Dottie, do we need, a lot of this was in our emails. Do we need our computers with us or...
Yeah.
Okay. Bring your tablet because a lot of the information is...
I've got it in my book.